...the commission meeting for April twenty first, two thousand and fifteen to order. We'll stand for a moment of silent reflection and the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Farby.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is to review and approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they wish to make to the agenda? Hearing none, those, we would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Your second?
Second.
Motion is second, to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda. Holly?
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hennies, Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of April seventh, two thousand and fifteen. Approval of the vouchers in the amount of two million, three hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-four cents. Number seven is to acknowledge the order for organization and incorporation for the Rockwood Road District as submitted by the Auditor's Office. Number eight is to set May eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, at seven P. M. as the election date and time for the determination of the organization of the Stakel Road District as submitted by the Auditor's Office. Number nine is to assign the two thousand and fifteen budgeted long-term reserve accumulations in the general fund as follows. Election equipment in the amount of seventy-five thousand, I.T. equipment in the amount of twenty thousand, and the inmate bus in the amount of one hundred thousand. All is presented by the auditor. Number ten is to set and approve the civil township bonds for clerks and treasurers as submitted by the auditor. Number eleven is to acknowledge the disinternment permit, number one zero two one nine six seven. Number twelve is the approval of the chairman's signature on the second quarter state and local agreement report as submitted by emergency management. Number thirteen is to approve the request to apply for a grant from the John T. Vikurvich Foundation as submitted by Health and Human Services. Number fourteen is the approval of the adopt-a-highway application for a portion of Norris Peak Road by the United Blood Service as submitted by the Highway Department. Number fifteen is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of March, two thousand and fifteen, as submitted by the Human Resource Director. And finally, number sixteen is the approval of the chairman's signature on the proclamation recognizing May third through May ninth as National Corrections Week as submitted by the Pennington County Sheriff.
Does anyone wish any of the items on the consent agenda removed?
Chairman, number sixteen, please.
Number sixteen has been removed. Any others? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item sixteen.
Your second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item sixteen.
I brought this up because it's National Corrections Week, and I don't know if Kevin Tome knows this, but I'm gonna put him up here. They had articles in the Native Sun News, and they have three parts on our facilities at Pennington County. And there's this pretty face right there. But I just think it was pretty awesome that Native Sun took the time out with our sheriff and our community to tell all about what services and how many employees we have and just some really good information. But this is, they're already on the second part, and they have three, a total of three parts that they'll be telling about our correction facilities and just what we do at Pennington County with the sheriff's office. So, thank you, Kevin, and your team with all the efforts and the time it took to do this, and Native Sun News for recognizing Pennington County and what we do.
Any other discussion on item sixteen? If not, do we have a motion?
So, Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the chairman's signature on the proclamation recognizing May third through May ninth as National Corrections Week.
Your second?
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Item seventeen, Pennington County comments requested by the United States Department of Interior for real property to be accepted in trust, land commonly known as payslaw. I might preface this item by pointing out that the deadline for comments to the Department of Interior relative to the trust is May fourth. Am I correct? In that respect, between the initial contact and now, there have been communication and negotiation relative to several operating agreements, relative to law enforcement, weed and pest control, emergency services, land right-of-way. Those items are not part of this discussion. They are continuing. Nothing is finalized in regard to those things. So, the point today is to decide what, if any, comments Pennington County wishes to make relative to the trust program. And in that respect, I'm not sure who wants to speak first. What's your? Jay, do you want to kick it off?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office. Commissioner Peterson, you laid that out very nicely. I mean, obviously, there was an application for trust status. Shortly after that, we started negotiations and visiting with representatives here on behalf of payslaw, the BIA, I believe, has represented, and a number of county officials, some of you included, have been actively involved in trying to work out some agreements that address a number of issues. Particularly here in Pennington County, we've worked on law enforcement agreement, if you will. It's fairly detailed. It needs some work. We've also been working on county roads, public roads, maintenance, construction, responsibility, the management and so forth of bison or buffalo on payslaw, invasive species, vaccination. There's just a number of issues we're looking at, and those are two different agreements, but they cover quite a bit. We have not yet reached a point where they're final, and they've not been presented for final approval by the relative bodies that would need to do that. So, as you said, I know that's not specifically on the agenda today. The comment period is, but I also understand that, I believe, to some extent logically, the county commission's position on comment is somewhat dependent, or maybe entirely dependent, on the existence of those agreements and the status of those agreements vis-à-vis the parties. Are we there? Have we dotted every i and crossed every t that satisfies everybody reasonably so? We're not there yet. We're working on it, and I believe everyone is committed to continue to work on it. But having said that, just for that background, so you know, I know there's a number of folks here today that would probably like to talk. Mr. Blue Dog, Mr. Van Norman, I think maybe Sheriff Tome, State's Attorney Vargo. I think a number of folks may want to address you briefly. So, having said that, given that background, I would try to answer any question while I'm standing here. Otherwise, I'll sit down and be quiet for a while.
Any questions for Jay?
No, Chairman. Just wondering what this letter is, then.
That's a proposed draft letter that we will examine at some point to see if it's something we wish to submit.
But not today?
Yes, today, if, in fact, we arrive at that conclusion.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Who would you recommend speaking?
One other thing I'd say, I don't know if anyone will bring it up today, so I'll bring it up now. There's, I suppose, another option on the table relevant to the comment period is to seek an extension of that May fourth deadline for thirty or sixty or ninety days, whatever would seem appropriate. I don't know if there's anyone in this room today that can flat say, yes, that can happen, we'll get it done, or not, but that might be part of the discussion. So, if people feel their hands are tied by that deadline, and the commission doesn't meet again until the day after that deadline, then maybe that's a serious option to consider today. But regardless, right now, we have a May fourth deadline, and that's the agenda item. So, Mr. Van Norman, I guess I'll turn it over.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Thanks for having us here again today. Weather's improving a little bit, so it's a pleasure to be here. And of course, it's always a pleasure to be here.
Thank you.
Did anyone lose their luggage this time?
I got my luggage this time, so I got my spring tie on and everything. I didn't consult with Holly first, but I stayed up late and did this PowerPoint thing, which maybe just helps me give you the story quicker.
Thank you. Yeah.
Are you gonna help me?
I can. You want me to use the camera?
Yeah. Sure. Clicker's fine. How do I use it?
Just do that one.
Okay. Well, as you know, we've been working diligently with you and your folks to try and address some of our issues. This is, this is a little picture of one of our tribal councilmen that went up there, and he's a photographer, and he did his grass dance, and that's him and all three shots that somehow they figure out how to meld together. But that's up at payslaw. And especially, George knows where this is. If you look up in the right-hand corner, that's satellite photo of the Black Hills, and there's payslaw right in the center. And here's the, kind of the close-up and a picture of the prairie. And for us, we consider that to be the heart of the Black Hills. And we met with our tribes on the thirteenth to talk about issues, and they want to especially have us bring across the idea that this is a very sacred site to us and the heart of everything, and a place where ceremonies are performed to keep life and the universe in balance. And it's known as the place where the animals returned in the spring, and those animals are sacred to us. And we've really had a strong unified effort among our tribes. That's several of the tribes on the stairs there in the Capitol. We met with the governor. There's Kurt, and we're at Standing Rock. We've gone out and met with the tribal councils. There's a couple of our chairman up at payslaw, and there's our religious leader, Chief Crowdog, and we've had other religious leaders involved. So, there's a very unified effort among the tribes that, in some ways, is unprecedented. And, you know, the buffalo are very sacred to the Lakota people. And when we're thinking about Indian trust status, you know, that comes to us from the Indian Reorganization Act, and President Roosevelt, after the turn of the century, found that too much land had gone out of trust and provided this mechanism for land to go back in trust. So, tribes are utilizing that, and that's a picture of the Oglala Sioux Land Recovery Effort, and they're restoring buffalo as well. And after years of effort, here we have, finally, in that middle picture, the buffalo, our first buffalo going up at payslaw. And we strengthened the fences, and we worked with, Lisa Colom is here today from Intertribal Buffalo Council. Lisa, you want to come up, just in case anybody has questions about buffalo? And these are buffalo that came from Teddy Roosevelt National Park, and it was a brucelosis-free area, and Lisa knows all the details on that. We feel like we've made a lot of progress on the cooperative law enforcement agreement. We came up with the principle that whatever law enforcement officer is there should aid anyone in need of assistance or respond to any incident or pick up any offender, and that they should have authority to stop, detain, transport, process the offender, and take care of anything. And then if there's a jurisdictional difference, there can be an exchange, maybe here in town in Rapid, and the BIA has their criminal investigator office here. Tim LaPoint's with us today from the BIA, and he can answer questions about that. You know, one of the questions that came up was what would be the duration? And so, we agreed that it'll be continuing unless the parties agree to replace it. So, we're trying to be practical and meet the objectives of the county and recognize your legitimate concerns. On the right-of-way agreement, you know, we had some dialogue about that in some meetings. We recognize, and Tim could address this, that the county retains ownership of the right-of-way, that you'll have primary authority over road maintenance and construction. And we said primary because sometimes the tribes in the BIA might be called upon to, you know, provide some kind of assistance, and we want to leave the door open for that. County roads are public access roads and open to through traffic and shall remain so, and will retain our access to and from the public roads. And if we need to change those accesses, we'll work it out in good faith with you. And this, too, is a continuing agreement that's ongoing unless it's replaced. We still have to work out the fire safety agreement, but the U.S. Forest Service has inter-agency agreement with the BIA to fight wildlands fires, and so that really takes care of the initial two thousand and twenty acres, because the BIA does not fight the structural fires. But one thing that we talked about was whether the tribes could have some resources up there ourselves, and we talked about that with your Hill City Fire District folks. And Shaka B. Sioux Tribe identified this fire, little fire truck, and I went over and took those pictures. That's my excellent photography. And it's, it's got these specifications that it's a one-ton, I guess, truck with six pump discharges, a thousand gallons, and three hundred gallons of something else, and a foam injection thing. So, anyway, this will be garaged up at payslaw, and we're finalizing the arrangements on that. So, we're still, we're still gonna work more with your fire district, but we want to let you know that we're, you know, committing resources. And on the emergency services, you know, we've talked to your ambulance people, and we'd like to have the same kind of response that you would elsewhere in the county, and we need to finalize that. At the reservations, we do run our own EMT services, so we know that it takes a little bit to do that, and that that's important for everybody. And naturally, with a large volume of folks coming through, we do also respond to the heart situations, and we know that if you have a heart situation, you want somebody to respond to it. So, these are just some kind of our traditional chiefs and a picture of Crazy Horse Mountain. And then these are the eighteen-eighty ledger drawings, which I thought were kind of interesting because they show the buffalo and the importance of the buffalo and kind of a mythic spiritual being there. And the top is a picture of Sitting Bull's pictograph of him capturing horses, and that was his signature with the buffalo coming out of his mouth, said that was his name, Sitting Bull. So, I think you can see that the buffalo have always been our spiritual animals, and naturally, we're very happy to be moving forward to restore payslaw to its natural state, and we appreciate your time and consideration. But we really wanted to let you know that we're working in good faith to move this along as quickly as possible. We had some good meetings recently, and we might have a couple of issues to wrap up, but we think that, you know, if we had another thirty-day extension on the comment period, and we don't object to that, that we could wrap up, you know, the remaining issues on these agreements, and then you'd have a better opportunity to consider whether you can support the project or, you know, maybe at least not object to it, but go forward with the agreements. So, we'd like to try and resolve that on a, on a positive basis. The only thing about sending in sort of a cover letter now to say that there's an objection because things aren't done is it kind of, kind of creates a tone about, you know, how we're doing things, especially to laypeople or people that haven't been involved as much. So, we feel like we can finalize these agreements, and we can get to a reasonable place on them, and we appreciate your consideration of that. And Lisa, do you want to tell them a little bit about the buffalo?
Well, it's quite a process in the buffalo world to obtain them and get them anywhere and just to get them loaded. We had about forty-nine head of buffalo that were not able to make their way into the state of Montana. They all came from the Theodore Roosevelt National Park. Anytime an animal leaves the park, they go through a series of testing, card testing, and then also blood samples mailed off for brucelosis and other common diseases. Due to the fact that the buffalo do not come from any disease area, then it's not required to have vaccinations. None of the national parks actually do a brucelosis vaccination because they're less than thirty percent effective in bison. And then also, brucelosis has been found in calves that receive the vaccination. So, you know, it's always a fine art. Someday, maybe they'll figure out a vaccination for bison, but at this time, the bison have never been exposed to anything. We had them down at the Rim Rock Ranch for about two months, awaiting payslaw to finalize its corral system. Several of the buildings out there are original from the eighteen-hundreds, and I personally just hated to see or think about buffalo rubbing on those historical buildings. And so, Indian Land Tenure put up ten thousand dollars to establish a corral system. And so, we hired a professional crew, Fence Tech Incorporated, out of Sundance, Wyoming, because they are very accustomed to drilling into rock, and that's basically what's out there. And we advanced the corral system and a small pasture area in which we went ahead and shipped twelve. I felt that was the safest number. Culturally, we always try and stick with dividends of four and seven, or multiples of. And so, I thought, okay, we have to have fourteen, or twelve, or seven, you know? And it just so happened I could have twelve, eleven heifers. On the concern of the animals getting out, in case that ever happens, there was a bull, big, nice, I mean, it's beautiful of a bull as you'll ever imagine. And I asked the story about him when we were up in North Dakota with the biologist, because he was cow-hawked in the back. But I mean, a beautiful bull. Well, he said when he was a calf and run through the chute, he had broken a leg, and then from overcompensating, he was cow-hawked in the back. Well, when these animals literally took off for a few weeks and got loose on a little white river in which they got really fat and sassy, Troy Heiner and I went and rounded them up with some local neighbors, and we noticed that the herd would never go as fast or as far as that one animal could travel. And I've never seen that. In fact, the ranchers that helped us were like, by God, I've never seen anything like it in my life. I mean, it was pretty neat. So, I figured, well, it's not a genetic trait of the bull, it's a physical characteristic. So, if the concern is that herd may eventually ever get out, which could happen, you know, cows get out, horses get out, you know? I want to make sure and put that bull with them because he's still sound enough to breed, and also, they'll never run as far as fast as he can go. So, to me, it was a spiritual release. I guess we gave a picture, a large color picture, and if you take the time to look in it, and I didn't notice this, I just hired a local bull rider. You know, I always hire bull riders because they're not scared to get in the pins, they're not scared to do anything. And he went out with me to finalize the corral, and we turned them loose. Anywhere they'd kind of sniff around. We would make sure and go and double-reinforce that area. Anyways, we were up on the top, just waiting for them to settle down, and I said, hey, take a picture right here. It kind of oversees the whole thing, and it'd be the, it might be in that deal, too. But the long colored sheet, they might be right in front of you to mark. Right there. There's a whole bunch of them.
Oh, there's a whole bunch of them.
Anyways, you know, you go home and you download off the camera onto the computer. And I started clicking through them, and I was like, holy smokes. Look at that, right in the clouds, there's white buffalo calf woman. There was literally her face in the clouds, and it looked like she's kind of blowing smoke. And see, to us, that's what white buffalo calf woman was. She was Jesus to us. You know, every religion has their own people that, you know, and she brought us prayer through the pipe, and that's where our people start using the pipe. And so, I thought it was really neat how we released the buffalo that day, and then as I was clicking through the pictures, there appeared to be a woman in the cloud. So, you know, that's where the cultural connection really is. You know, we believe further in the connection of things, and to me, that's why personally, as a tribal member, I've been volunteering my time, because this is really outside of my work at I.T.V.C. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're hopeful that Lisa's gonna stick with us to help us on all of the, you know, technical aspects and...
They're about the calf, right?
And they're about the calf, and we have a nice lady next door that's a member of Roosevelt Sioux Tribe that's...
Well, I saw Kurt raise his hand to help. He's on the...
Kurt usually likes to help at that. Yeah, I don't know if Kurt and I are the right, right folks for that. But Lisa has done a great job, so we really appreciate that. And it was a long road to get these buffalo because there's a lot of competition for them, and we felt like it was important to get them from the national parks because they're, they're wild buffalo, they're natural buffalo, they're not domesticated buffalo, and they haven't been mixed as much with cows. So, you know, we feel, we felt like that was important, so that's a good start for us. And we have Mike from Anyhorses, who's one of our Lakota cultural historians, and the tribes wanted us to make sure that we emphasized the culture, and maybe me and Kurt aren't the right foremost exponents on that either. Mike, did you want to come up and say, say something?
Morning.
Good morning to all the folks back here. You know, the, I spoke before on this matter, and the thing that really interests me is that we have a very special place, and we have a lot of folks in our community who are hurting, or losing our young people to suicide. I, I don't do body counts, but it's up there. We have veterans coming back from all of our conflicts who need healing. So, this place can be very special for that, that can go up and spend a week or two and heal, feel that power from the center of the world. And we're also gonna be doing some things here in the community. I happen to be good friends with several ball players, ex-ball players who are now NBA officials, and we're gonna do some basketball camps this summer, and we're gonna include Rapid City Community. Our population is growing here. I think we really both feel the need to understand a lot of complex issues here, and so we want to do our part and work with our young children. There is too much misinformation. We're quick to anger. As you know, we banned the Rapid City Journal at Pine Ridge, and actually, people are pressuring us because they want it back. It was an overreaction, perhaps, but nonetheless, a lot of that misinformation we need to deal with in a good way. And I feel we have a place now where we can sit down and talk about all the issues that are common to us. Tourism is one issue, recreation's another issue. I'm like you, I get elected every two years, so I gotta be really mindful of what I say and not misspeak. and not misspeak. But look forward to the opportunity to move forward with this agreement. It's sad, you know, that we can't just do a handshake on these things anymore, but there's a lot of complex issues. So I just urge, you know, cooperation, also with the general public. There's a lot of Lakota folks up here now, let's, I'll manage to get along. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then it's probably worthwhile to ask Tim LaPointe, the BIA Regional Director, to come up and talk about, you know, the possibility of an extension.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. Again, I'm Tim LaPointe, Regional Director, Bureau of Indian Affairs, Great Plains Region. You know, we, we have always been very open to extensions on fee-to-trust applications, and as you know, the application is pending in our office in Aberdeen. So, you know, I think it's a good idea to extend the comments based on what I've heard today and discussing it with, with Kurt and, and Mark. And so I was looking at the calendar, and I don't know if June 5th would work for everybody, but that's when I would certainly be willing to extend it out to June 5th. That's a Friday. So the only thing that I would ask is you provide us with something in writing, and we would certainly make a determination right away.
Okay, thank you.
And any other questions for me? I know that, you know, I can answer questions on the, on the process, but the way I view our role right now is we're a neutral party, and we'll evaluate the application based on all the information that's provided to us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mark?
Yes.
Are you ready for a motion here pretty quick? I got one.
I thought perhaps Mark may have some...
I mean, you know, you said you didn't want to talk about the specifics. I think we're going to get into the specifics.
No, I was actually going to try to avoid the specifics. Mark Vargo, Pennington County State's Attorney. What I would suggest, Jay has drafted a letter that would, in fact, indicates the, the board's opposition under present circumstances. But what I would suggest as a motion is that the board authorize the chairman to sign and send that if, in fact, the comment period is not extended. That way, we'd accomplish what Mr. Van Norman suggested, which is not setting a precedent or setting a tone if we don't need to. But I also don't want us to be in a position where the comment period does, in fact, expire, and we're sitting there not having put our input into it. So I think that rather than simply saying we should either oppose or not oppose, we could give the chairman the authorization to send a letter in opposition if the comment period has not been extended beyond the board's next meeting. And then we can work from there as far as timetables go. I don't know exactly how long any of the agreements would take. Mr. Van Norman seems to think that if, in fact, we get to somewhere where we could agree, that he could get the four tribal entities that are involved to sign off within the appropriate period of time to June, I think 10th is what?
15th.
Or 5th, excuse me, June 5th. We would certainly work with them on whatever timetable works. So that would be my suggestion for a motion at this time.
Thank you. Kevin, do you...
How can I make a motion?
Sheriff Dome, do you have any comments?
Kevin Dome, Pennington County Sheriff. If the intent today is to not get into the weeds, so to speak, as to the specifics of what we're trying to work in the agreements, I'll stay away from that. And I guess I like the State's Attorney's recommendation on a motion to, I think it meets both parties' needs in terms of how he laid it out, so I would support that.
The other thing I would throw in there as well is that none of this has anything to do with how the property is going to be utilized or moving forward with that. I think we're still in a cooperative stance on that, and everything that is anticipated can be done, frankly, in a parallel track to the trust status anyway. So hopefully, that wouldn't be interfering with anything that you heard this morning about reintroducing the bison and whatnot. So hopefully, that'll be something we can continue to work on, and without getting in the way of that, we can then still have the trust question and have full input into that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Sheriff, I made just one question, maybe it's for the BIA Superintendent out of Aberdeen, I guess. Does he have the authority to authorize that, or does it have to go to Interior? Who authorizes the extension? I guess that would be good to know. And I think just to reiterate what the State's Attorney said, this isn't getting in the way of anything they want to do. Everything they want to use the land for can be done today as is, so we're not hampering that effort, so to speak. And it is a noble use of the land, and I don't think we're in the interfering with that process.
Thank you.
Chair, do they have a copy of this letter that we have? Do the lawyers?
I think if you follow Mark's suggested motion, it would not necessarily be this letter.
Well, actually, the...
Yeah, we already have those. I'd like to hear Mr. LaPointe's response.
I'm not the superintendent, I'm the Regional Director, and I do have the authority to extend the deadline.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I ask Mr. LaPointe another question? I always worry about the, this is a short period of time, and we have been, you know, working on this for quite some time. So what happens if we come to the end of that 30 days? How many times can it be extended?
We can extend it as, as long as necessary.
Okay.
So, yeah, if we come to another 30 days and you need more time, we'll, we'll look at all, again, we'll evaluate with all the parties, interested parties, and make another determination.
Okay, because I just want to make sure we do it right.
Okay, are we ready to take action?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I, I guess I support the letter, except I think I, I would change in the last sentence where it says, "Under the circumstances explained above, Pennington County respectfully requests a 30-day extension to submit comments. However, if an extension is not granted, in that instance, Pennington County will must therefore oppose the application."
I'll second that for discussion.
Thank you. I like the 30 days because it keeps everybody on the straight and narrow, and let's get something done about this. If, well, if we don't get it done 30 days, we'll have another 30 days, and it could end up to be another year. So let's keep everybody on the track of, let's do something about this. And this basically says, yeah, we wanted 30 days, sounds like we'd get that, and that would be my motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments?
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Kurt Blue Dog. I think I've met all you folks before, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here to address the Board of Commissioners. And I'm going to be real brief here. Procedurally, I think the 30 days is a good idea, in fact, necessary. I think we're pretty close. We've got to deal with the guys here and with the sheriff, but I think we're, we're not far apart. And I hope you guys agree with, we'll find out. You'll see what, we brought our version, we handed it out, and then the one that was in your packet. But Mark had suggested coming back, is there another meeting in a couple of weeks? I don't know if we can do that, because the thing, what I'm concerned about is we do need some time, yet we've not, while we have shared, or the documents that I've handed out with the reps from the tribes. See, we still need to get the approval of the governing body from each of the four involved tribes. And while we've shared some or most of it with some of the reps from the tribes, in fact, I think just a week or two ago, we had a meeting in Minnesota where it seemed to be favorably, you know, favorably accepted, but you never know. I mean, it's got to go in front of the board, just like there are all kinds of political considerations here for the county board. Each of the different tribes has their own methods and values and cultural issues that they will need to do. And they like some time, too, to look, I mean, they don't want to be pressured and say, here, look at this and get a motion to pass it. So what I'm saying is that we do need some time, Mark and I, some others, to take it to the tribes, so we will need some time as well. Hopefully, I think the 30 days, if we can get right at it with, with the folks here on the agreement, I think that could work. I feel optimistic about that. And largely, I mean, just want to urge and thank all of you folks and the staff, the sheriff and the county attorneys for working with us. I think we're pretty close, too, and hopefully, we can get this done, and set a precedent, maybe for others. Maybe not in Pennington County, but other counties in the state, or, or other tribes and counties across the United States. This is a pretty unique situation and a real special situation. So we, on behalf of the tribes, we definitely appreciate the cooperation and assistance of the Pennington County Board. Thank you, and unless anybody has any questions, I'm going to grab my chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would you have a motion and a second? Everyone understand the motion? Jay?
I'll just throw this out there. You know, we've thrown out June 5th, which is actually more than 30 days, and I know the BIA can accommodate the timeframe, but when you're talking about logistics of needing to pass whatever agreements we, we might finally arrive at and go, these are done as far as both sides are concerned, then there's logistics of providing those agreements to the various entities that have the authority to sign off on, including yourself. Realistically, 60 days is honestly, in my opinion, far more realistic than 30, or whatever June 5th would be, 47 or something. So I just think more like 60 days is more of a logical number to accomplish all of those things, plus the logistics of getting it in front of the bodies that have to make the final decisions.
Thank you.
Members of the board, I'm, I agree with Commissioner Buskerwood, Buskerwood, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Okay. I really am reluctant to, to put it off, and maybe, and maybe it's more objectional to put it off in, in different steps, so there may be some value in that in terms of Jay's suggestion. And I, I think, I think we can agree to that. We're reluctant to, you know, basically, we want to get it done as, as anybody would, but logistically, I think Jay makes a good suggestion that we do have to go through the steps to run it by our political bodies as well, and hopefully, it, you know, hopefully it slides right through, but you never know what political considerations involved, and different elections coming up and those types of things. So I, I think we can agree to that, and of course, you know, the Bureau, Mr. LaPointe, it would be his, but I think if both parties requested or were agreeable to a 60-day, that's probably, probably a good idea.
I guess I would have a question. If you ask for 60 days, and you get done in 49 days, do you have to wait?
No.
Anyway. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can submit the comments, you know, 10 days from now if you wanted to, and put it in, make it part of the record. But our evaluation would not, we would not make a determination until after the comment period is completely through. So depending on if additional comments were provided. So if we say it's going to be July 3rd, then we won't make a determination, we won't issue a decision until after that date.
Okay.
I'm in my own motion, Mr. Chairman, to 16.
I'll second his amendment.
An amendment has been offered to make it 60 days, and there has been a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The original motion is amended. Back to the original motion as amended. Any further discussion on that? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all. Next item is a lien release request.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just say, having been here in December, January, February, and March, it'll be a pleasure to be here in June and July.
We'll, we'll welcome you. Okay, sir, you may, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, Commissioner Ward. Yeah, I'm requesting a lien request, release for the item, the item before you. I am in the process of purchasing a home in Rapid City, and the request, the lien that's in question, I'm assuming was, you know, leaned against me in 1993, and I was totally unaware, and it was done in conjunction with my ex-wife, which I was divorced in 1989. And since I wasn't aware, I went through the process of purchasing a home, and I was told I was liable for, so I tried to pay my portion, and then I was told I could not pay it because they didn't know what I owed. So I wasn't sure what I owed either, so I was basically trying to clear it up so I could purchase a home. And as the process goes, they told me the percentage of commission to see if I could be released from the lien, or at least be able to pay my fair share, and then have a lien released for my part that was obligated.
Do we have any questions?
Mr. Chair, you actually addressed kind of one of the questions that I had. The amount of 361710 is your portion, or is it the entire bill for the representation of the children?
As I was understood through checking, but it was the entire portion of that lien, and I also that, that fee included the lawyer's fee for the kids and my ex-wife at the time. But when I talked to the auditors, she couldn't divvy out what I was responsible for, because basically, we were divorced in 1989. She had custody of the kids, and I was named because I'm the biological father. So nothing was ever charged me. I think I got, you know, mentioned because I'm the father of the kids. So not knowing that that was the case, you know, I mean, I had no reason to check into it. But since I'm listed, I thought, well, maybe I should take care of it. But in order to take care of it, they said I had to present it to you to either be released or pay what is my fair share, which no one could seem to tell me.
Any other questions? Do we have...
I have, there's a memo in your packet. I, I did some research with the clerk of courts, and the liens in the joint account were for the, the representation of the children. The mother has liens in only her name, and I believe this gentleman paid for his own attorney. He does not have liens filed, just for his attorney in this case.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we follow the deputy auditor's suggestion and, and split the lien between Mr. Honorable and his ex-wife.
Second. In the amount of...
Just split the lien, that'd be my, my first motion, and there'd be a second motion to follow that.
Okay, any other comments? You have any questions, sir?
Would you? I was saying, when you split the liens, is that, I guess I don't understand what splitting the lien means.
The lien is for $3,617.10, and to split it in half, half would, would be assigned to you and half to your ex-wife. That's my motion.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the motion? If not...
Mr. Chair, I just want to be clear, because Karen, in, in your note to us, you say the practice is to split the attorney fees.
That's what we now do.
Okay, but it was not done...
It was not done that way then.
I just want to clarify that to make sure we're there.
Any other questions? If not, we have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chair, my second motion would be to release the lien to Mr. Honorable upon receipt of a proper payment.
All right, thanks, Commissioner.
Second.
I'll second that.
Do we have a second motion? We have a second? Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item is item 19, Notice of Objection Process Period for the Proposed Kane Creek Land Exchange. See, do we, whoever wishes to speak, I guess, come forward. Come forward.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Martha Witcher, Emily Township Clerk, number twenty-four. With the authority of the township board at our annual meeting, I have the authority to speak and represent our township board at this meeting. Our township is concerned about land being taken off of the tax roll. I don't know how much of the commission remembers or are familiar with, this has been an ongoing process actively since two thousand and eight. Our concern as a township to the commissioners in the past, since two thousand and eight and before, is that the coordination laws that are set in place by Congress and by the Forest Service Rulebook Number Thirteen, two-one-nine point seven, A and D, their own regulations which state the Forest Service is obligated to coordinate with the equivalent and related planning efforts of local government. Two-one-nine point seven, the Forest Service is obligated to meet with local governments to establish process for coordination. That's just part of that. I had a meeting yesterday with Max Main of the Mountain State's Legal Foundation, because I have been unclear as to why the townships and the county, Pennington County, have objected and raised awareness of coordination laws being broken. Why does this continue to happen? Why are we up here again for the fifth time stating that nothing has been followed in accordance to congressional and Forest Service rules? We are local governments. It was to my assurance from that meeting with him that I have understood the coordination effort correctly. We are to be involved as local governments and school districts, we are to be involved in the planning process, not to find out from the Rapid City Journal, bless their heart, that the Kane Creek land swap is moving ahead. When the Rapid City Journal came out to interview us on our ranch, he continued, and, and respectfully I say this, he asked me how many acres were in the swap. Didn't know, had not been coordinated with, and I'm clerk of the township. He continued to ask me questions, which he knew had no answer as clerk of the township. I talked with Todd Trask. He has been a school board member of the Wall School District for six years. I talked with him this morning. He authorized me to relay to the county commission. In all of his six years of being on the school district, he has never been at a meeting where anything has ever been brought before the Wall School District. Right now, over one-third of Wall School District is already federal land. This is a sincere impact to a school district. That is why these laws and rules are in place, so that we all consider a table and have our impact. Our township is a small township in the scope of things. Pennington County Commissioners have to look of the health and well-being and needs of all county people. You have the sheriff, you have your roads, you have your bridges, you have a lot of obligations that a lot of times are reliant upon the tax base. There's talk of payment in lieu of taxes, there's talk of Bankhead Jones money, there's talk of Impact Aid money. None of that is guaranteed in stone. That begins at the congressional level. What is guaranteed in stone is that Pennington County has responsibilities to the patrons to provide for their needs. Be you live on the west side of Pennington County, in the middle, or the east, we have to attend to their needs. If we allow this twenty-five-hundred acres, which I have not seen, I have not seen any of the documentation set out by the Forest Service in the link that was provided by the Rapid City Journal, I've not seen any of the information. I'm clerk. We have had six publicized meetings this year alone. Our financial meeting, our annual meeting, our equalization meetings, no one contacted us. We allow this to go through, today it's twenty-five-hundred acres, tomorrow it may be three thousand, the day after that, it may be another ten thousand. We have right now three ranches in eastern Pennington County down where I live that are open for trade with the government. Right now, if Pennington County is between forty and fifty percent already off of the tax roll, we cannot allow this precedent to be set. I'm here today as the township to ask you, in the objection period, to object to this Kane Creek land exchange. In your packets, I understand you have copies of the letters that we had written before. Nothing has changed. Nothing has changed since the other letters that we have written before. The township has contacted the Mountain State's Legal Foundation in Denver for representation and assistance in this matter. This organization is knowledgeable in the rules and laws and the validity and legal status of what authority that we have to stop this. I spoke on the phone yesterday with the foundation's chief legal advisor, Stephen Lynchner. We are sending a letter and additional information to Mr. Lynchner, asking the foundation to represent the township. We need to have someone that knows the rules and the laws and the, and the accountability to make this stop. Township would like the Pennington County to join with us in this request, since our interests are the same. This is from Max Man. The reason why we're doing this is not that we do not trust the ability of our township boards and our schools boards and our county boards. That's not it at all. The reason why we're looking into our legal avenues is because this is the fifth time we've come before you and said, the laws and rules are not being followed. And it's paramount that we work together to save the taxpayer. We can only tax them so much. And so, I don't know what else, if anybody has. I'm going to work with our representative, Liz May. I'm going to work with her to see, to go to Governor Dugard personally, relay this information, because last year, when this came before, the state had the same information on the same date that the township and the county had it, which is not how it's supposed to work. It's supposed to go through the channels. I'm going to, I've been asked to be at the Wall School Board meeting the second Wednesday in May to inform them. I'm clerk of Emily Township. This should be the job of the coordination where we all sit down together, so that we're all aware of what's going on. Going to be in contact with the Jackson County Commission, see if they've been coordinated with, do they know that, what's going on in their county? I'm trying to do my active part as a taxpayer, because as a taxpayer, I'll stand over here, as a taxpayer, if this land deal goes through, we will be in in holding. As a taxpayer in Pennington County, in the past, the Forest Service cannot manage the prairie dogs that they have at this time. As a taxpayer in Pennington County, there is a sign that states that Pennington County put down in the Badlands, caution, prairie dogs have plague. It's along Highway forty-four. It was an established fact, because Pennington County has the diligence to protect those people, which they did. Pennington County's doing everything they can to protect our patrons of our county. As a taxpayer, I cannot afford any more land taken off the tax roll. As a taxpayer, I cannot afford the impact of the black-footed ferret in our area. So, that's my little... And the other thing, the other point, just real quickly, I forgot to mention this. I'm supposed to point out in our comment, which is our objection time, we need to, and this is from Max Main from the Mountain States, he suggests that there's been no coordinate, we need to comment in our letters, no coordinations with the township, with the county, unless they've coordinated with the county, school districts or state. We need a complete environmental impact statement should be conducted, not just an environmental assessment. They have not even gone through the proper studies that they're supposed to, as in our other two letters. They didn't either. And it's going to have an adverse, adverse economic impact to the township and county, and we have had no notice to the township and counties. And I would like to know this, which is what we're going to see if we can get help with, how did they get their evaluations? How did they work on their assessments of land values? How did they get their assessments in Fall River to exchange for, is that the same soil sample? Do we know anything of what's going on? We don't. Or as a township, we don't. And I'm asking the county if you do, and I would hope that you would ask me questions if you have any, and I would hope that you would support us in joint efforts of objecting to this land being taken off the tax roll.
Any questions by the commission?
Mr., go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I do have one question. This environmental impact statement is, what, fifty pages long?
Yes.
That you weren't contacted as a township?
Absolutely not. I was given a link by the Rapid, by the South Dakota Stock Growers. A link.
Whoever did this assessment, and it doesn't really say whether it was a contract job or whether the Forest Service?
But beyond the front, on the inside, it's supposed to be who the author of is that. Turn the page, it should be on the front page. They have to have who the author of those are. I don't know, sir.
Well, it has a responsible individual, but I wonder if it was a contract. Anyway, it doesn't make a difference, you were not, you weren't not contacted, nor were the other townships contacted?
Absolutely not, nor the school district. How did you receive your packet, sir?
From, from our administrative assistant.
According to coordination efforts, it's supposed to be in a planning process. According to Congressional and Forest Service Rulebook Number Thirteen, we're all supposed to have that in the planning process, not after these are done, in the planning process.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is more of a comment, and, and I want to just tick off on what you're saying. You know, this is an environmental assessment, and what you were saying is that it needs to be an environmental impact.
Economic impact statement.
Yes, and we, we don't have that, but I have to agree with Martha. I cannot believe this, when it was on the agenda again, and we just can't seem to get through to the folks that are involved in this, and it's very frustrating. We actually have asked for some of this information over and over again. We just don't get it. And I hate to see us run the risk, because, because I'm the old dog right now on this, on this commission, and we several times have had to go through these kinds of land exchanges. And unfortunately, it seems like Pennington County is the one that they take from, and then I think it's because they think we can afford to handle it in our budget, which we can't, and we can't continue to do that. And I also want to comment in some of, some of the information we received about how we get money for the, the PILT and the different programs every, every budget year. We have to decide whether we are going to be, actually be authorized for that or not. It is not a reality for us to depend on, and it just totally depends on what's happening in Washington, DC.
Thank you.
And so, I don't feel that that's a fair argument for saying that we should support this as a county, because we don't have any guarantee of any money ever, the way it is now, to, to help us to handle when they are giving away our, our, our land and exchanging it out without letting us know. So, that is my...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could address the commissioners. As everybody knows, down at the state level, for three years, I've been fighting this, because the counties that I represent are all in serious financial trouble. And it's mostly because of the national grasslands, the forest, and of course, the tribal lands. And this idea that the PILT money is available is absolutely, it's just untrue. It's never figured into their, the budget, especially now at eighteen, nineteen trillion dollars in debt. They don't care. Jackson County specifically, we have went from, just in our court, court costs in three years, from twenty-seven thousand to seventy-two thousand. And this just can't go on. And so, my effort with Martha and hopefully you commissioners and Jackson County, and I think Bennett County is even going to be on board, I'm trying to coordinate a meeting with the governor, with his office, and we've got to take a stand on this as a state. We need the state and our counties to take a stand on this, because this isn't going to go away. What everybody needs to understand, the Forest Service doesn't have to make money. Right now, they're losing two billion dollars a year. If that money, if this land was controlled by the state, the state makes money on their, on their land, and that money goes to our school systems. And we all understand, I mean, it's in the news all the time, there is not enough money for our schools. And so, if we continue to let this happen, it's just going to be a snowball. And so, I just strongly encourage you that if I get this meeting set up with Governor Dugard and their representatives, other representatives for Pennington and these other counties, that you will attend, because I think it's that important. This is an ongoing issue, and it is not going to get better. And the idea that we have to come up here, this is the second time I've come with Martha, I understand this is the fifth meeting on this, the idea that the Forest Service can come in and bully us is absolutely, well, first of all, it's against law. States are sovereign. We have sovereignty rights, period. End of discussion. That has been decided through our constitution, and the United States Supreme Court said so in two thousand and nine, that the Forest Service cannot do this, but yet they continue to do it. And we are just one estate that is affected by this. There's many states in the western part that are in the same battle, and we cannot keep turning land over to the federal government. We just can't do it. We can't afford it. I had a, I sit on the taxation committee down in Pierre. We had a lady come in front of us from Sioux Falls, begging us, quit. She said, you're going to tax me right out of my home. And so, it is, it is very, very important that we take a stand on this, and we need the commissioners to come and help me at the state level convince Governor Dugard that we need to take a stand on this. And I think Martha's reached out with the Rocky Mountain?
Yes.
Legal Foundation, and I think it's something that we need to pursue, because this isn't going to go away. This is going to get bigger. And my question is, I didn't realize that the tribes were here representing?
Pace Law.
Pace Law. And how many acres is that?
Yeah.
Now, I live on the reservation, and I can tell you what the BIA does, and they are not any better than the Forest Service. So, if you're going to take that land off the tax rolls, and then you're going to take this land off the tax rolls, you know, somebody's got to pay. That's the part that people don't understand with it, work for the federal government. They just think that they get their check every two weeks, no matter if they do their job or not. Well, who's paying that? The few taxpayers that are out there. And who manages this land better? The BIA, the Forest Service, or the ranchers who've been doing it for over two-hundred years? I am sick and tired of the ranchers and the farmers being attacked, and nobody backs them up. Agriculture is our number-one industry in the state of South Dakota, and everybody needs to sit up and pay attention to that, because without ag, our schools, our roads, it all depends on that. And so, I just really, really, I strongly encourage you, if I get this meeting set up that you guys will attend, bring your concerns, this just can't keep going on. We, we're not going to be able to do our job down up here. I, we're just... So, anyway, I appreciate your time once again on this.
I might suggest to you, twice in the Senate, I passed a bill that said there would be no more acres of federal land in the state than there are now, and if they wanted some land, they had to give up land elsewhere. Passed the bill twice, Janklow vetoed it twice.
Yes.
Overrode the veto in the Senate twice, couldn't get it passed the House.
Nope.
It's a new day.
It's a new day. And I've been, I've been meeting on this drum for three years, and we came within three votes this year of getting it. I, I mean, I never could get it out of committee, and I got it out this year with the help of Jackson County Commissioners. They made, I don't know, countless trips down there. But the state kind of does what the federal government... But the state kind of does what the federal government does to the state, the state's doing to the counties, and that's got to stop too. They pass laws, but they don't fund them. They pass them on to the county. And that is what we're seeing with the criminal justice bill and the juvenile justice bill, and that's why the court costs in Jackson County have went from 25,000 to 72,000. Now, I don't have a problem with the bills. I think they're great bills, whatever, but somebody's got to pay for that. And so, I need your support at the state level, because that's where we've got to start. We've got to get the state people on board to say, we are going to, we are sovereign, and we are going to exercise that. And the Forest Service does not run the show, the BLM does not run the show, and the BIA does not run the show. So, anyway, I know I'm speaking to the choir, but it feels good to get it off my chest once again.
Is there anyone else who wishes to testify or come in?
I was just going to finish, Chairman, before I sit down, just real quickly. I would like to just mention, I'd like you to look into the audience, and I would like to see if there's any Nature Conservancy folks here or Forest Service folks here.
That's another question.
I would like to bring that to the commission's attention. We openly have meetings where they can go and coordinate with local governments. We advertise our meetings in the paper. When you look across the room, I do not know, is there anyone we can ask these questions to? I would appreciate the commission objecting to this land exchange. I would appreciate the commission working with Emily Township, pursuing what the Rocky Mountain or Mountain State Legal Foundation, see if we can pursue it on a legal matter, which is of no cost to the township or to the county, and they do know their laws and rules. I would appreciate you protecting the tax base for the Witchers. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Chair, I'd also like to know if anybody from the Forest Service is here.
I'd like to know that.
I don't think so.
Anyone from the Nature Conservancy, they're the, I'd like to bring that to everyone's attention in this room. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the commission. My name is Sylvia Kristin, and I'm the Executive Director for the South Dakota Stock Growers Association. We've been involved in this Kane Creek land exchange from the very beginning, and we are also in the position that our membership is on both sides of this land exchange. We have members also in Fall River County who are putting property back on the tax rolls in that community. However, we have dealt and supported those members as well, who have had real difficulty and challenges in working through this with the Forest Service and the Nature Conservancy. They were provided very little detail as well, had a very hard time getting any information about the assessments that were used, and they were then given 10 days to make a decision whether or not to purchase land and those types of things. It was a very non-transparent process. But to that end, the Stock Growers Association has very strong policy supporting private property rights, and so, we don't pretend to have any opinion on whether or not someone can buy or sell their own property. However, the coordination process of the federal agencies is something that is in law, and something that has to be followed, and something that has not been followed in this process or in many others. And my belief would be that if a true coordination process had been followed before any offers were made to purchase or sell private property or Forest Service property in this case, there should have been a coordination process to find out whether or not those offers were even appropriate. And I think that that is where the Pennington County Commission needs to take a stand and start demanding that the Forest Service do a better job of coordinating and asking these questions before we get into the position of telling people what they can do with their property. This coordination process, as Martha quoted, is in congressional law, it's in Forest Service law. It is a process that is supposed to be gone through in order to keep the citizens informed of what is going on, and also your local government, the school districts, and others who are impacted by this. So, we are just here today to encourage you all to continue to request and do what you can to demand that the Forest Service and other agencies are following those coordination processes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, county commissioners.
Morning.
My name is Scott Edoff, and I'm a taxpayer of Pennington County, and I have some concerns about this land trade and taking this, you know, the property off the tax roll. Even when they have a conservancy easement, we have divided the estate, we have split the estate, and they do not pay taxes on the split estate. When someone, they sell that to someone in agriculture, they pay the ag tax on it, but the developmental tax is never paid. And I would like the commission to somehow address that subject, because what they're doing is they're only paying half of their tax. And when they split the estate, it doesn't say that they can't develop it, it just says that you can't develop it. And so, I believe somewhere down the road, they're going to hold this property until they can develop it. And we have lost that tax. And that's one of my biggest concerns, and I've got another concern about in this land swap, the Forest Service has used the Nature Conservancy as a land agent. Now, if you're a Realtor, and correct me if I'm wrong, aren't you bonded and licensed through the county or the state?
State.
Are these, these people are collecting money from these people in Fall River County without bonding? You know, they're holding this money in earnest. And I would really like the state's attorney, your attorney, to look into this and make sure that this is on the up and up. Because why aren't they bonded? Why aren't they licensed? Why don't they go by the same rules that we do? That's my two concerns. Thank you, if you have any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I do have a question for Scott. Are you aware in these land exchanges of any concerns with the grazing, any grazing permits and so on? Is there going to be, are you aware of any issues with that?
Well, they have been taking some of these grazing permits off, you know, they bank them, and you can't go in and get them again, because they hold them for wildlife or whatever reasons.
Okay.
So they're banking those.
So we do see, I guess my concern has been that as we make these exchanges, that we begin to lose the ability for the ranchers who are using those grazing permits to actually have access to the property that they've had before.
Yes.
And I have thought it was becoming less available to the ranchers, and I just wanted to see if there was comment on that.
Yes. I have no further questions. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If we have no further comments, do we have a motion?
Chair, can this body write a letter or of concern or draft a concern? I think that would be a positive step for Pennington County Commissioners, is to draft some letter that of our objection, or even some of our concerns from our constituents and ourselves of what's happening on these land exchange. Would that be appropriate?
We have in the past written letters submitting comments, and I'm sure we can do the same, again, if that's the wish of this body.
Mr. Chair, no comments, it's been closed, but may I just make a suggestion that if you do write a letter, if you could get me on your email list, and so, I can coordinate the counties and the people that, for the meeting, hopefully with Governor Dugard, that we get, so.
That lady right over there is magic fingered.
She's got the magic finger?
Emailer.
Because I was trying to, I just want to make sure that we, everything should be put in writing, and we should all be on the same page. So, I'll get with her, and maybe I could, would it be appropriate that I could use it for Jackson County and Bennett with their commissioners? Share it with them.
And do we have to have that in a motion, or are we just in agreement that we do?
Oh, you might want it in a motion.
I'll put that in a motion then, to draft a letter with our position or our concerns and our constituent concerns.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Just, Mr. Chairman.
On the motion.
I am in favor of the motion. I'm not sure that does much good, this administration and its underlings do not follow the rules and regulations or the Constitution very well. So I'm not sure we're going to do much, but we keep trying, and I'm in favor of that. Now I've got my political statement in for the day.
And, Mr. Chair. Perhaps in the letter, we can boldly say how many times we have considered this and how many times we have objected, boldly and in big print.
Okay, on the motion. Any other comments? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item 20.
Oh, Mr. Chair. May I also make a motion to support Emily Township in their connection with the Rocky Mountain, I'm sorry, I'm trying to think of the name of it. Legal Foundation, in their pursuit of finding out what we can do about coordination efforts and enforcing those laws.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? If not, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carried. Okay, item 20. Anything new?
No, I was just going to please remind the commission that there's a 45-day comment period, and I would appreciate if I could just send a letter to the commissions and let them know about the school board meetings and keep you informed when we work together, please, and that we also need to, in our comment letters, to make it clear that those, none of those studies had been done or notified. I've told everybody wherever I go that they're supposed to coordinate, so just if you would please involve that. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Chair, before we leave the topic, that what Martha's saying is, you know, we have a draft decision notice in front of us and an environmental assessment document in front of us, and if what she says is true about they're being flawed because they weren't done procedurally.
Yes.
Then we, I would suggest that we have our state's attorney, an empty state's attorney, get with her and find out the particulars, and if there is a procedural issue, challenge it Forest Service.
Okay. Item 20.
Thank you.
Fiscal year 2016 budget evaluation presentation.
Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. I apologize for the sound of my voice. I am not so perky today. But I am here for this, because I know you're looking forward to this.
We always do.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to give you some numbers. A lot of it is going to be a review of the last time we were together, and I'll try to skim over some of that. This has been requested of me before you start your budgeting process to give you an idea of what you're looking at. Now, keep in mind, I'm going to be talking assessed values, not taxable, and when you are looking at your budget, taxable values are the most important. Okay, which button? That one does it. Cool. All right. Our current assessment, including registered mobile homes, is about $9 billion. We added about $229 million to the tax roll last year. That's new property, which is an increase of about 2.7%. And I told you the last time that that's, that new growth figure is down a little bit from last year's 3%. Our reappraisal amounted to an increase of just under 3% this year. Difference between reappraisal and new growth is, new growth is new property that wasn't on the tax roll last year, and reappraisal is just the changes we did in assessed values. The new growth is important to you when you're looking at the caps on your budget. I told you the last time, and I've said it before, that all property in South Dakota for property tax purposes is supposed to be assessed at full market value. The assessment notice indicates full market value. Your tax bill will show you taxable value, and that is a different number than assessed value. Assessed value is full market value. My office is called the Equalization Office. Equalization in South Dakota means that all property is assessed at market value, not that all property changes the same amount from one year to the next. And as we go into the Board of Equalization process, you'll hear that complaint, my neighbor's property changed at a different percentage rate than mine did. Equalization means every property is assessed at market value, not that it changed from one year to the next at the same number. If we did blanket assessments where all property changed 3% last year, we would cause some problems. That'd be wrong for three reasons. One, the most obvious, some properties experience physical change, add a deck, add a garage, finish a basement, or simple depreciation. A second reason is, is the real estate market reacts differently for different properties and in different locations, and that is sort of obvious. The third reason a blanket assessment change would be inappropriate is, is that it would assume that all properties last year were assessed at exactly the same level of accuracy, and that's not the case. We frequently find properties that were assessed above or below market value, and we make those changes for the next assessment year. State law requires that all property be assessed at market value. The measure of the accuracy of our mass appraisal is a sales ratio analysis, and I explained to you the last time, that sale ratio analysis is a ratio of assessed value to sale price. And we look at all of our open market transactions. This year, it amounted to just over 1,800 sales. We calculate that sale ratio, assessed value to sale price for all 1,800 sales.
Shannon, can I stop for you for a minute? What's the difference between a blanket and a mass appraisal, then?
Well, I was talking about a blanket change. Some people like to think that we raise all assessments 3% increase from last year to this year. We can't do that. That'd cause some inequities. A mass appraisal is what we do when we supply the county auditor with all of our assessed values. We are appraising all of the property in the county en masse at once. Okay, so we're looking at a sales ratio analysis to judge the accuracy of our assessment. And I've talked to you about a median ratio analysis, or a median level of assessment. That's the number that the state tells us that we look for, that indicates the accuracy of our appraisal. Our median level of assessment this year is about 98%. In other words, of all of those 1,800 ratios, those sales, and we do that ratio, the median number was 98%. Then we also want to look at how tight all of those 1,800 sales are grouped around that median, and I talked to you about that coefficient of dispersion, that's a COD. And I think I told you the last time that we are looking at a COD of about 10%. This PowerPoint presentation was prepared several weeks ago, so the numbers are a little bit different. I have a little bit better numbers the last time I talked to you. But 9 to 10%. So, from these numbers, we can say that the average property was assessed plus or minus about 9 to 10% of 98% of market value, based on those 1,800 sales that sold. Those are good numbers. State law requires that we be at 100% market value, or at least 85%. We are at 98%, and the COD is required by state law to be less than 25. That's plus or minus 25%. That's a huge margin, margin of error. We're at 10% or less. The industry standard is, is between 5 and 20%. We meet all of those and exceed those. Now, when we look at those sales ratios, I hear questions about why do we have some properties assessed for more than what they sold? Well, there's two answers to that question. The first is, is the real estate market does not sell on some exact formula. People buy and sell properties for all kinds of reasons, and we can't measure all of those. Some properties sell higher, some sell lower. We look at all of the sales in the market, and we tend to set our assessed values down the middle of that. So, we're going to be assessed higher on some, higher on some sale prices and lower on others. Second reason is, is our assessed values are not perfect. We don't know everything there is to know about every property. We We, we can't know everything there is to know about every property. And we can't accurately, or maybe even come close, to measuring some of the influences in the market. And, and made a joke the last time I met with you about some of those influences. There's life situations and emotions that go into sale prices, transactions. So, for those two reasons, we're gonna have properties assessed for more than what they sold for and for less than what they sold for. We're shooting for the middle of the market. One sale does not make a market. We're looking at all of the sales, all eighteen hundred of them. The state does a sale ratio analysis on all of our sales, and they use that to set our taxable factor. And I talked to you generally about why we have that taxable factor, but what the taxable factor does is it, it puts our level of assessment for wherever it's at to eighty-five percent of market value. I've got an error on this slide, that second line up there, below the heading, twenty-fourteen taxable factor. That's twenty-fifteen. I apologize for that. Our level of assessment this year is about ninety-eight percent. Our taxable factor we're looking at is about point eight-six. Point eight-six will take ninety-eight percent to eighty-five percent of market value. And you can see a history of our taxable factor there. Go back down to two thousand nine, two thousand ten, and we had a level of assessment around ninety-three percent. Our taxable factor was ninety-one, ninety-two percent of assessed value. So, the, the higher our level of assessment goes, the lower our taxable factor is. Again, we're looking at a taxable factor for twenty-fifteen of about point eight-six. Okay, ag assessments. I went into a lengthy discussion the last time we met about ag assessments, and I've done this before. Generally, ag land in, in South Dakota is now assessed on a productivity formula which considers crop production, crop prices, rental rates, and it's, it's disseminated through the county, through all of the properties, using soil ratings. We get numbers from the state Department of Revenue that give us a top dollar value for crop-rated soils and a top dollar value for pasture-rated soils. The state, after going through all of that information and that formula set up by the legislature, gives those numbers to us. We apply them to all of the properties in the county based upon the, the soil ratings of each parcel. When the state of South Dakota created this productivity formula, it had its basis in crop prices. Crop prices went up. We have been chasing this productivity number for a couple of years. It was understood that when we started this, that the productivity assessment was higher than our current assessment, and you can see that at the lower end of those two lines there. Our, our crop-rated soil assessment in Pennington County is indicated in the blue line. The productivity number where we're supposed to be is in the red line. And after they started this, that red line just went up as crop prices went up. Our productivity assessment increased, but the legislature created caps that, for seven years, it could only increase at ten percent per year. That's the first couple of years there. The productivity assessment was actually moving farther away from ours. The legis, and that was happening in many counties. The legislature changed those caps to a twenty-five percent increase, so after the first two years, or the first three years, you can see the increases have gone up. We're actually getting a lot closer now. At the end of that line at the top, we're about twelve percent away on, from our assessment to the productivity assessment on crop-rated soils. Last year, we increased about fifteen percent on our crop-rated soils. What I don't show you here is our range-rated soils. We, in the first few years, hit that point, and it has just leveled off. Now, there is no parcel of ag land out there that is all crop-rated soils, nor is there one that's all range-rated soils. So, no, no parcel went up fifteen percent last year. There's always a mix. But the average parcel increased maybe twenty, twelve percent. All right, I'm sorry, seven percent last year because it would be generally about a half crop-range-rated mixture. We expect with that twelve percent gap there to maybe next year, not knowing what's gonna happen with crop prices and this average that the productivity formula is based on, that maybe another year, year or two maybe, and we will have reached the, the productivity assessment on both crop and range-rated soils, and then it will float with rental rates and crop prices. You're going into, and have just started, the Board of Equalization process. I talked to you about some of these numbers already. This gives you an idea of what we're looking at for appeals this year. In twenty-fifteen, we have approximately, when I prepared this, about a hundred and twenty parcels that have an appointment before you to be heard, but this includes the property owners that have multiple parcels. And in fact, out of that one, one hundred and twenty, there's one property owner I know that has forty-three of them in one. That's one appointment, one, one argument there, so you're not gonna see a hundred and twenty people come before you. Now, I explain to you about the list where we, we put parcels that have been appealed on a list, and you can act on those all at once. We have maybe about three hundred of those on, on those lists there, for a total of about four hundred and twenty estimated parcels appealed this year. Out of something like fifty-two thousand parcels, I think these are pretty good numbers. We will never get to a point where we will have no or very few appeals, and justifiably so. The county assessor and his office is not perfect. We will always have some misinformation, and the appeal process is how we discover a lot of that. And there will always be somebody that, regardless of how good information we have, wants to argue with the county assessor anyways. So, these are good numbers. This is average for the last couple of years, down significantly from previous years. I would expect that maybe at some point, we even see more appeals than this, because this is less than one percent of our total parcels. This is really, as far as the industry goes, pretty good numbers. That was a quick skim through it, because I've already talked to you about some of this, and, because I'm not feeling so good. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I do have one. Any idea why twenty-fourteen went from forty-five to this year, a hundred and twenty?
I know we have, we have a couple of property owners that have multiple parcels that made the biggest change there. You take forty, forty-two parcels off of a hundred and twenty, and that increase doesn't seem so much, and that's only one of a couple of property owners that brought multiple parcels like that. Otherwise, no. There, there is no reason. That's, that's just what happens.
Thank you. Any other questions for Shannon?
Thank you.
Take your pills before work tomorrow.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is item twenty-one, and that's a budget discussions.
Good morning again. What you have in front of you is the start of the twenty-sixteen budget cycle for Pennington County. Auditor Person was unable to be here today. It's my understanding she's in an election school, so I'll go over just a couple of brief little items that she put in the memo addressed to the board. For twenty-sixteen, the state certified the C P I at a level of one-point-five percent. As Shannon just indicated, preliminary property values show a two-point-eight percent growth for county consolidated, a two-point-four-eight percent growth for county fire and library, and a smaller point-seven-six percent growth for an unorganized road. What we are asking of the board today is to make a motion so staff can get started on preparing twenty-sixteen budgets. And the motion would be to prepare twenty-sixteen budgets using the existing wage scale with the one-point-five percent C P I applied, award merits, and prepare reasonable operating budgets. We'd give them approximately a month to prepare budgets, a couple of weeks for Julie to compile, and continue with budget hearings. They're set for June seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, and then you consider provisional in July.
My motion would be, if you repeat it, Holly, that'd be my motion. So Karen can get it.
Is there a second? I'll second.
Karen, do you need that motion repeated?
Please.
Okay, that's what I thought. Holly, if you could, please.
To inspect the departments to prepare the twenty-sixteen budgets using the existing wage scale with a one-point-five percent C P I applied, award merits, and prepare reasonable operating budgets.
Thank you, Ms. Holly.
You're welcome.
Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll give you my, my usual speech. I'll vote for this, but I don't want it held against me that, hey, you voted against this, so now you gotta live with it, because I might not live with all this stuff. But to get started, we need some place to start, and this is as good as any.
Any other comments? If not, we have a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Okay. Did you want to address long-range planning?
Yes, sir. All right, it made my paperwork with me. We've done this once prior in my six years here. The commission at one point had wanted to take on long-range planning for Pennington County, and, and asking departments to prepare projections for three years on what budgets would look like. We did it, I believe, in two thousand eight, and the next board had decided to put a hold on it until we moved into our new building here, and things got settled down. So, I'm bringing this back in front of the board for you to decide if you wish to re-implement long-range planning for Pennington County, or just move forward with our budgets as we have the last few years, which is a one-year snapshot at a time.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I do believe that it is important to attempt to do this, and one example that I can think of very recently has to do with our inmate transportation bus. You know, we've had, we use that a lot. We needed to replace it, and we had the discussion at the end of last year, well, shall we begin to put money into a reserve so that when we need to replace it again, the money is there? Those are kind of, the kind of discussions that can come from long-range planning that I believe is important to look at when we are budgeting. It is not fair to a taxpayer if a large dollar item like the bus comes up and we decide, well, we've got to tax that year for that big item. It's much more fair, and it's much more intelligent, in my mind, to look at those types of things, plan out ahead for them, and keep your taxation levels on a more even keel for our taxpayers. And so, I really believe we need to pick this up again. It was difficult during the time that we were trying to get the new building going, trying to figure out what that plan would be for our employees and our departments. So, I, I'd like to see us start it again.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I, I agree. I think it's a good idea. I'm just wondering if, I see you have before, they should fill it out and get it to you before May twenty-seventh. Is that gonna conflict with budgeting? Are they gonna have time to do all that? I mean, otherwise.
I haven't set the calendar yet, a hundred percent for dates, so we could certainly look at going forward.
I just find out from the department heads if they want, if they think they can do it, that's fine. If they want another month or two, that's fine too. Yes, I know.
Well, Chair, just meeting with some of the department heads, asking people their goals. Some had goals, and some were looking at me like I was nuts. So, I think goals tie into like capital improvements, equipment, employees. I mean, what are your needs for the future? Because if you plan ahead, I think it's a lot better. And, and in the city, I think it worked really well for us to know those big projects and those big items. And I hear, see people shaking their heads, especially the, the auditor's office, so we know where we're going. If it's big budget items, I would appreciate that we know way ahead of time, and you have a three-year or a five-year plan in order to pay for that. It really works well, and part of their goals is, where do they see their department going? And when they, they're going in a direction that might be a lot more money or a lot more costs in order to implement their goals, it's nice, I believe, as, as county commissioners, to know what that goal is, so we can kind of plan ahead for that, and they've told us ahead of time.
Well, and for full disclosure, our departments do this anyway. I just don't feel that we're necessarily getting the information all the way up to commission level in the right format, that, that you guys know that that's what they're already doing. I mean, you know, from this morning, from the supplements, no, excuse me, not supplements, the moving of the, the funding, the reserves. I mean, sheriff does a hundred thousand every year for, for his bus. I T. does twenty thousand every year for server equipment. So, these people are already doing long-range planning. This is just another format to get the information to the board.
And that would, I guess that would be the bottom line for me, because I guess I haven't seen it or know about it, and we're coming up on budgets, so I don't know. Maybe it's because it comes in May or how you do that here in Pennington County, but it worked really well with the city when we planned ahead and made a difference for us, giving away the money, or not giving away, that sounds like the wrong note.
I was not, I was not shaking my head because I was disagreeing with you at all. And as Holly pointed out, we, even in the midst of, of the, I'm sorry, K J Peterson, Chief Deputy Auditor, we, we started with some of the planning, the first in, in this year's budget, with the addition to the bus, the continuing addition to I T., the election equipment accrual, so that as we move forward, a few years down the road, it's time, and we come in with the supplements. And I do believe the, that, that will continue to, to be the case.
Ms. K J., is there anything else that we need to add to that, would that would help you end this commission with the numbers at the end of the year for twenty sixteen?
At this point, with it just being the first step towards moving, the, the motion with general direction is the best thing for the, for the departments to, to be able to start work with it. And, believe me, they're, they're already working on them, have them done, have, to a certain degree, and are working on some of these things. So, for Julie here, she would say the same thing. This is a good starting point, and as you move forward to, that there, there's going to be changes, not just with wages, as we work through the, this information we get from the study, but other, other specific concerns from either departments or for, for commissioners for future planning.
Thank you, Ms. K J. So, do we need a motion, Holly, that we want to do long-range, or?
Let's hear from Nick first.
Okay.
And actually, if you want to vote on that, that's, I was gonna get up here and just talk about budgets in general, but we moved on too quickly, so if you want to fix the, finish this item, please go ahead. I want, Nick Street, the H R. Director, I was here to speak on behalf of the Healthcare Trust Board.
Oh. Do you need an increase?
Well. The Healthcare Trust Board met this month, and one of, what our goal is, is on, at our next month meeting, which is on May twentieth, we're going to have a recommended decision on premiums, whether we hold them, increase them, or decrease them. One of the things that has happened in the last week or so, as people are preparing their budgets, they're coming to me personally and asking me what I think, and I can speak as one member of the board, but I'm not really comfortable letting people know it is a board decision. So, I just wanted you and the department heads to know that the Healthcare Trust Board will be finalizing that recommendation at our May meeting. We do know there's gonna be some fee increases, which is going to affect our larger departments, such as the Sheriff's Office and the Highway Department. And then, we're also gonna have to discuss premiums if there is an increase, which would affect people's budgeting as well. So, I just wanted to give that update as the chair of the Healthcare Trust Board, so that is a big piece that'll be coming on May twentieth.
Any questions for Nick? If not, anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I do have a comment. I guess it's all a matter of perspective, but long-range planning, three years, that doesn't seem very long-range to me. I'd rather see this thing out five years, especially for equipment and capital improvement projects. In fact, five years is even, even too short.
We can put three to five, couldn't we, Holly?
That's the direction of the board.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Like I say, especially capital improvement projects, five years is pretty short-term.
Mr. Chair, can I respond to that? I think standard is probably five years, George, I'd agree with you on that, but what we run into sometimes here is really that, and Martha Witcher, kind of, or I mean, Representative May, I got them mixed up for a minute, kind of said that we, every year, the state legislature goes down to peer, and they figure out how to pass some money down to us. And so for us to plan out for five years makes it difficult. Even a three-year, sometimes based on what laws are passed and what's thrown at us, can really eschew a five-year plan, and it seems like a three-year gives us a little better handle on reality of what might happen to us.
Well, Senate Bill 1 is the perfect example.
Totally.
I would envision that some things may have a one-year plan and some may have a 10-year plan, and it would depend on the issue itself. So the question is, do we act affirmatively on this issue to help discipline ourselves into a process of thinking forward, or not?
I think yes.
Do we have a motion?
Well, my recommendation is that we should have some idea what's out ahead from the department, you know, those folks are here day-to-day, the department heads, and they should have some vision of what, 10 years down the stream, you know, for equipment and buildings, and so on and so forth.
So I'd make a motion on the long-range planning to have a three-to-five-year window in there. They'll know different. If it's only three years, it's three. If it's five, it's five, or if it's a year, it's a year. They'll be able to put on their paper what they're looking out and how long that would take us. And then we might come back and say, okay, you said in a year we could come up with $130,000, might take us two, so.
Do we have a second to that motion?
That's a very long motion.
That's a long-range motion. Sorry.
I think Karen can separate out the essence of it.
So I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
Item 22.
Good morning again, KJ Peterson, Chief Deputy Auditor. Item A is a request for a transfer of package off-sale liquor license. The current owner is Johnson Siding General Store, owned by Patrick Shannon, at 12,300 West Highway 44, and is currently package off-sale liquor. And the request is to transfer to Johnson Siding General Store, again, with the owner being R&amp;R Gas &amp; More LLC.
Chair, KJ, have we had any issues out there with liquor license, or any of the problems out there?
No, not that I'm aware of this. These, as all, go to the sheriff, and if there's any concerns, they send them forward. I see we have none, so.
I'll make a motion to move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B.
This is, the way that I have this letter, just I want to make sure, I'm picking this up from Julie, is addressing both items B and C?
The memo does, yes.
Yes, okay. So item B is the resolution to discharge the county aid liens with no activity for 30 years. And it looks like that is approximately $284,000 in liens.
Move approval.
There a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And I have a question, KJ. These are two separate deals.
Correct. The memo addresses both item B and C for you, but we actually need two resolutions, the first one being to address the 30-year and older liens with no activity.
Okay, and that's what the motion covers, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this one? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we're on to the item C.
And item C, again, addressed in the total memo dated April 9th, is a request to approve the discharge of county aid liens of deceased persons, and we have that total at approximately 200 and, just a little more than $273,000.
Move approval.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 23.
Good morning. Kevin Tompkins, County Sheriff, again. And I sent you a memo kind of outlining, lining the issue for the electronic healthcare records, but just a brief background, if you will. In March of 2014, we came before the commission and had asked to put some leftover funds from the previous year into a reserve for electronic healthcare records. The commission chose at that time instead to supplement $40,000 into our budget, which the purchase price was $143,000. I'm not sure what all the logic was at the time, I'll go back and look at the minutes. I think part of it was to see if we could come up with the rest of the money later in the year, or find some other way to fund it, which we didn't. So that money was put into our budget at the end of this year, since we didn't spend it. That $40,000 reverted back into leftover funds for this year. If there's a silver lining to it, last year the request was $143,000, this year it's $133,000. The cost actually come down. And the question is, why do we need to do this? And just remind the commission, one, it's a federal mandate, and two, and Russ is here from IT can help answer this, but it's one of our homegrown programs we still have that exists in Pennington County, and as Russ will tell you, we'll always have a few of those, but we tried to migrate away from as many of those as we could when it makes sense, and that's what we're trying to do in this case. A number of the other service providers in the community are using this software, so it would be, you know, consistent with what they're using, and we'll have the ability to upload to the Department of Behavioral Health, which is under DSS, who we do a lot of our work for, by having this software. So I guess the bottom line is, how do you fund it? I mean, my request today is for $133,000 to implement this electronic healthcare records, and just for the commission's information, out of last year's budget, we did revert $643,157, and that's usually, generally, a collection, or a combination of over-collected revenues and underspent budget. So I guess I'd ask for some of those funds to be made available to go ahead and purchase electronic healthcare records for City County Alcohol and Drug, and KJ is here to help address where that might come from, if the commission is so inclined. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Chair, if I could, you said it was federal mandate. Is there a time period for that federal mandate, or is it has to, meaning right now, those records should be done the way this electronically is doing?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the, I think the mandate was last year, and what happens with the federal mandates is, over time, then, because you get federal dollars, they start stripping away, you know, a percent of the funds you get if you're not in compliance, and that's what they'll ultimately start doing.
Russ, do you have anything to offer on this issue? KJ?
Russ Tinsvold, IT Director, I was shaking my head no, because Kevin really summed it up, but I just want to throw my support behind this. The more of these pieces of software that we can move from our in-house developed software into something off-the-shelf, the more our developers can focus on the ones that we'll always have in-house. So I'm in full support of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, if the costs keep going down, I think I'd be in favor of waiting a few more years.
I contemplated that.
The company paperwork notice to supplement the budget, do you want to talk about that?
Sure. That would be the required motion if the board were to approve this expenditure in its entirety for the year 2015. At the end of 2014, the $40,000 is now in the unassigned fund balance, along with all the other unspent and over-collected revenues in the general fund. The board made a decision, I think about a year, a year and a half ago, to get away from people identifying those leftover dollars. Part of the reason why we, as we look towards future budgets, we, you have encouraged things like the beginning of the bus reserve and the continuing IT reserve. So the motion that you would need to make today would basically be to schedule a hearing to supplement the- the CCADP budget, general fund CCADP budget in the amount of $133,000 from the general fund unassigned reserve. There is $100,000 in contingency, I always like to remind the board, that's built into your current year budget. I don't think we've spent any of the contingency last year. We haven't had a lot of contingency transfers in the last few years, and oftentimes have returned that $100,000 as well to the unassigned fund balance. But once again, in the 2015 budget, there is $100,000 in your contingency fund that you could use for this as well.
So the hearing date, if this motion was passed, would be when?
It has to be posted for 10 days, so it always falls in line. I don't know if this is a two-week, is it two weeks till the next meeting, or three? Either way, it's going to be the next scheduled commission meeting.
Tuesday, May 5th would be the hearing date.
So could you word the motion-
Sure.
-for us, please?
The motion would be to schedule a hearing at 9:15 a.m. to supplement the general fund CCADP budget in the amount of $133,000 from the general fund unassigned fund balance.
That'd be my motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, now, is this in a reserve, an unassigned reserve?
It is, it is not in any kind of reserve at this time. In 2014, it was supplemented into the existing 2014 budget. It was not spent. It didn't then automatically, it doesn't automatically fall into a reserve.
This combines two of the things I just despise about this. One is over-collected revenue and underspent budget, now I want the money back. There is no money. It's gone. It's in this year's budget. Another thing is, why weren't we talking about this last year? I can't even complain about the sheriff, because he was. It's our fault that we didn't give him the money. And I know that electronic is mandated, because I'm going to the doctor and I, that's all I hear nowadays, and so I'm sure that we've got to do it, so.
And Sheriff Tommy is correct. At the time that we came to you, I think it was in about March of 2014 that he initially brought this to you, and I think that there was some discussion, and it looks like even in your memo, that perhaps you were hopeful as well to save some money, and that this could be done by the end of the year 2014, which we all know is one heck of a year in Pennington County for getting things done, so it just did not come to fruition. The money was unspent, and you are correct, Commissioner Busch, it is, it is not anywhere anymore, except in the fund balance.
I think we need to do it.
Can I, can I ask you something, Chair? Ms. KJ, if he has 640 over-collected or unspent, can't he just come at that time and say, we're going to need $143,000, instead of giving some of that back?
It's not his. It's all the counties at that point, and that's exactly what this previous board kind of came to the conclusion of in budget process over the last two years, was rather than continually coming in with requests for what was identified as unspent and over-collected revenues, we would move away from that theory. We used to be known, quite frankly, across the state as the supplement kings of the county. We haven't had one yet this year, and I can't tell you how proud I am of that, that we reached those points where, at the end of the year, budget needs are addressed, whether they're shortfalls, grants, sometimes, and I know we're going to be coming in with a few more in the next few weeks, that you can't always wait till the end of the year. But ideally, the commission recommended, let us work towards coming up with our needs and working them into the budget, adding them into reserves, and this one kind of fell right in between that transition period.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions, or do they have to wait until we actually do the supplement?
We, the motion is to schedule the supplement, and if you have a pertinent question relative to the motion, it would-
Well, I do have, and I think they're pertinent, and number one, it's estimated cost of $133,000. Is that plus or minus 5%, 10%?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, that's a recent quote from the vendor, so it should be right on.
And the rest of my question, my second question is, maintenance and updates, this is all software, correct?
Correct.
And this is a one-shot deal? But as it changes, then come back to us for more money?
Absolutely. There will be ongoing maintenance costs, if you will, with any of these software programs there always is, and that's something we'll have to budget for going forward.
Any idea, over the next 10 years, average, how much will that involve?
I'm trying to remember the exact number, and Brenda's back here from City County, but I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of $15,000, $16,000 a year for-
An annual, annual upkeep, so to speak?
That's correct.
Whereas in-house, that would be?
$13,000, I stand corrected.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item is item 24A. At least you're still upright.
I'm still upright, yeah. I have some abatement requests that the auditor has submitted to you-
Who are you?
Shannon Rittberger, Director of Vehicleization. We will, we will get to those that I have, I have submitted to the commission, but you have one here that's item A that is brought to you from the property owner, and I don't know if the property owner is here.
Okay, do we have someone here who represents item A? State your name, please.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. I am Gary Gregson, and this is my wife, Judy. We are here today to request an abatement of our 2015 tax bill. When my brother passed away five years ago, he left his $106,000- away five years ago, he left his 160 acres near Deerfield to us. He acquired the 160 acres over 50 years ago and used the land for grazing, haying, and timbering. In his last years, he rented. When we acquired my brother's 160 acres, we continued to rent. Our nephew, Tim, rents the land. He puts up hay, makes a few bucks processing the many, many bug trees. A year and a half ago, we were told that we needed to fill out an application for agricultural classification. We did that on October 14th, 2013. We have a copy for each of you. After we filed the ag application, we heard no more until we got a huge tax bill for the 160 acres. $11,085.08. Yes, Commissioners, $11,085.08. Our assessment went from $10,300 in 2013 to $600,000 in 2014. Yes, almost 60 times as much. Unfortunately, Commissioners, we did not see the huge, huge increase in the assessment for 2014. We would have continually appealed. Our 160 acres near Deerfield is used exclusively for ag purposes. Please abate our huge tax bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we have.
That's the 2015, this is the 2013.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do you have anything further you want to comment on, sir?
Not really, I guess.
Jay, are you, or Shannon, one of you address this?
You can stay here, I'll use this mic. This property was part of the review of all ag properties that we did for 2014, or in 2014. The property owner said 2015 taxes, this is the 2014 assessment taxes that are due in 2015. The property owner, along with many property owners, then submitted an application for ag classification that gave us a minimal amount of information. I actually called Mr. Gregson and asked him some more questions about the property, made that phone call in October of 13 in anticipation of the 2014 assessment. I was told that of the 160 acres, only about half of the open area was hayed, the open area here, exclusive of the timber as a minority of the acreage. The, he told me that his nephew hays that open area, or about half of it, and then feeds the hay to his horses, and then grazes his horses on the property. There was no mention of a lease, and to my knowledge, it was just the horses on the property and that minimal amount of hay. The assessment notice was mailed out with a non-ag classification, and there was no appeal on that assessment. Now, the property owner in January has received a tax bill and is here before you because of that.
Any questions for Shannon?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So Shannon, we've had lots of discussion about what is abatable and what is supposed to be taken before the equalization hearings, correct, about how this is handled. It, as much as I hate to say that, this, it appears to me that this is a, an equalization hearings type of thing, and not an abatement.
I agree wholeheartedly with that. The classification should have been appealed if they thought it was improper in 2014.
I have a question. Did you take us off of the ag classification, then?
Yeah.
Is that why the taxes went?
Absolutely, yes. The property was classed as non-ag for 2014.
But now it's classified, it was classified as ag for 2013, and now it's classified as ag for 2015. How can that, one year in there, be, where's the, and why didn't we receive a notification that we would be taken off of ag?
That was the assessment notice, and that would have indicated non-ag.
But we didn't realize that when we got it. It didn't state that on there, that we were taken off of ag.
It certainly does.
So, bottom line is, how do we find solution in this, Commissioners? They were in 2013 ag and 2015 ag, but no 2014.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Now, we all know that horses are not ag, right?
Yeah.
How about grazing horses, or cutting hay to feed to horses? Does that qualify for ag?
I'll leave that for Jay.
Thank you, Jay Alderman, with the State's Attorney's Office. First of all, to answer Commissioner Troutman's question, this is an equalization matter. There's no question about it. And marking error on the abatement application does not make it an abatable issue. It is strictly a classification issue, which has to be presented, both by attorney general opinion and state case law and state statute. It has to be presented to the Board of Equalization that you're about to start doing every spring. That didn't happen, and the notice that went from ag to non-ag was provided, and that's the case for, I mean, I feel bad having to say this, but it's the law. That notice is given to everybody that owns real estate in Pennington County, and you have to look at it, and it says right on there, ag or non-ag. And if it says non-ag and you disagree with that, you have to appeal. So that opportunity has come and gone, and this is not an issue that can be abated. As to Commissioner Buschrood's comment, grazing is an ag use. There's interesting comments, as Commissioner Buschrood is very much aware, about horses as an ag livestock animal. But I'll say this, there are, if you're grazing the property, or you're cutting hay to feed, an argument perhaps can be made that that is an ag use. Unfortunately, the opportunity and the time to have made that argument for this piece of property has come and gone.
But he has had cattle on there before, just the last couple of years, he hasn't had no cattle on there.
And I'm not here to dispute, I don't know the facts, and I'm going to trust what you're saying is true. But the notice went out as non-ag, and there was reasons why our equalization department frankly disagrees. And so the notice goes out that says, "We're listing you as non-ag for this assessment year," which was 14 pay 15, taxes paid in 15. Your option is to appeal to the Board of Equalization. That didn't happen. I don't know of any other redress. For one year, you should have done that, you didn't. I don't know what else to tell you.
Sir, did you have something you wanted to say?
My name's Tim Gregson, nephew. And my father and I, and Othel Gregson, brother to Gary, the original owner of the property, we've had cattle on there since I was a kid, and I'm 72 years old. And we've run cattle on there. We always kept a couple of horses on the property, because all the property around us, the land, the Forest Service has landed a grazement, so these people have their cattle coming up against us. And at 72 years old, or even 60 or 50, I'd rather get on a horse. And we always had horses there, because if the cattle came in, then I had a horse to ride, or my brother or whomever, to push the cattle out of there. Well, that was fine for a while, and then all of a sudden the ponderosa pine beetle came across the country, and it'd come up against the property, and Othel said, "Tim, get in there and do whatever you have to, to get the ponderosa pine beetle infestation out of, out of the property." Well, the Forest Service tried to do what they could, but every year, there was a new, a new forest encroachment on the private property of Gary's, and I made arrangements with Rod Schaefer and I and my equipment and whatever, to take the logs off the property. And we had made arrangements to sell that to Lindy Sawmill over in Custer. And at that time, with my skid steer and chainsaw and whatever else we needed to do this, it really wasn't a money-making deal, other than what we got from Lindy Sawmill, or if I sold some corral planks to a rancher or whomever, it was more or less a break-even situation for us. So there was no really, there was no income realized by Gary off of this, other than I was working to try and keep the infestation off, and the hay situation, and the fire danger out by putting up the hay, and I'd get 40 to
Fences up.
Yeah, and the fence situation, pardon me.
Sir, not to interrupt you, but so in 2013 and 2015, nothing has changed in between there? Nothing has changed on the property to, to put your ag status on 2013, and then been tanked off in 2014, and then put back on in 2015? Everything has been the same since those two years?
Yes, and my sawmill is still setting up there. And at this point, now, we're trying to get the, the trees that have last year's bugs in them to the sawmill, so we can process them, and try to eliminate losing more trees off the property, which is considerable.
So Shannon, may I ask you a question? So if you made a mistake in this case, like we've had in the past on some of our issues, we can't say 2014, or this assessment they're talking about was a mistake, and then abate them like we have in the past?
No, as Jay explained to you, there, there was no mistake here. The classification was based on the information that we had at the time, and that went out on the assessment notice. There was no error on that assessment notice.
So how can it be 2013 ag, 2014 no ag, 2015?
That assessment, that paper that we filled out in 2013 is exactly the same.
And it has 160 acres? I mean, that's pretty, pretty common sense there. And they haven't changed the use, and you guys are saying on grazing or something else, but why would you do it two times and not in between?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question that might clear up some of the confusion? We really haven't set a classification for 2015. We're talking about previous years, correct? Because that classification for 2015 will be as of November 1, and, I mean, we don't have a classification for 2015 yet.
The most recent assessment notice is that were mailed in March, is 2015.
Right, but it's for 2014. It's not
November 1, 2014, yeah.
Right. And, and we keep talking about what we're doing for 2015, but it's really for the previous year that we're talking about. And I want to get 2015 out of that discussion.
The 2014 assessment was based on the information that we had at that time. The property owners are saying that nothing, nothing has changed on the property. Well, I don't know that. I had the information that I had at the time to, to judge the classification of the property, and I went through that information. Hayes, a few acres on the property feeds the horses that are grazed on it. That's all I knew at the time.
Where did you get that information?
That was with the application that the property owner submitted, but then with a phone call to Mr. Gregson, I asked a bunch more questions to get more information.
One of the things this illustrates to me, and it goes back to something we dealt with previously, and that is revising your communication cards. If some status like this changes, you have a statement, bold statement there, saying, "Notice, change of status." But when you pick that card up, nine people out of 10 look at the numbers. They don't look at the initials, the ag and the non-ag and so on. Every, every bill I get from the REA says, "If you change your address, fill out the backside," and that's in pretty bold print. So this illustrates to me that you continue to upgrade the communication provided on your, the things that you send to people.
We, we are certainly up for any improvement we can make to both the assessment notice and that ag application. We are limited with the assessment notice to what's required by state law, but we can add to that.
Can someone tell me what their tax was and what their tax is now? Do you folks have that? What is your, what was your tax, and what is your tax today?
Our tax today is 11 Our tax today is $11,085.08.
What was it before?
Before, it was about $130 a year.
Big crap.
Shouldn't there be, shouldn't there be some kind of, everything goes into the computer. Shouldn't there be some kind of alarm that, when it, when it makes that kind of jump, that you should be contacted either personally or by a registered letter or something?
I'm just going to say, there needs to be some help with this guy some way. I know we have laws and everything, but wow. We're going to take these people from $130 to $11,000, and we're telling them we can't do anything for them? They missed their date. That's, that's just, to me, that's just crazy. I mean, $11,000 to $130. What if they don't have $11,000? They're going to lose their land, or someone's going to, you're going to put them on that list, somebody can, you know, take their property until they, until they pay it?
If I try to address that again, I'm not going to be any more help than what I originally said, frankly, but I just want to
I know what you're going to say, Jane, I apologize.
Our legislature has created a very cut-and-dried system when it comes to this exact issue, and our legislature has said the venue to argue both sides of the issue, I should be ag, I don't think you're ag, comes to you as the Board of Equalization annually. That's all our legislature has given us.
Yeah, but Jay, there's got to be something we do personally, when we take someone's land from $130 to $11,000 to give them a bigger realization that we've changed it, so they understand, and I'm sure they wouldn't have missed it if we would, if they would have known. I'm positive that, holy, I won't quit saying that word again. Okay.
And, and that would be, I mean, if there is a, a way to do that, that would be, I'm sure everybody would be happy, or happier with that. The law doesn't require that, and that's why, I guess, you probably haven't seen it to this point. It takes sometimes a case like this to highlight some of those issues, and maybe there ought to be a change in legislation.
And I don't think the legislation needs to change. We have to change at the county in order to make sure these people, and we haven't gave Shannon direction, so I think it's time we give him direction. When we have these big jumps, there should be some kind of red flag or something on those, those assessments.
Mr. Chair, may I make a comment? One of the things, this is very indicative of what we have dealt with as we've been going to the state legislature, trying to clarify what agricultural pursuits are, because aside from notification, there would be question of whether these are considered complete agricultural pursuits, given the way that the state law reads. And I, there's a, a bigger kind of problem here that we've been trying to address, but one of the things that one of the things that, um, that is important, is that there needs to be a better definition in state law, and we have been working on that, Deb.
And, and I understand that, but, um, property rights are huge, and a hundred and sixty acres is a lot of land to figure out that it might not be ag. I'm just saying, whether you're having specif- specifications, whether this is grazing or not, these people have been doing this for seventy-some years, I mean, that's pretty obvious at a hundred and sixty acres. I can tell you, I'm not gonna take away their way, away a life, um, and I hope the legislators understand that, um, because we want to start classifying where they should get some tax breaks and where they shouldn't.
It's already an existing law, though. We aren't starting it. We're trying to define it better.
Well, you're adding to it. So, um, just saying, it's not working in our county for this classification today, and we've just overcharged, I believe, uh, these people.
Well, Mr. Chair, I've been sitting listening, and, and I kinda wonder what's going on. If the government makes a mistake, and you've heard me give this speech before, the government makes a mistake, it's, oh, don't do it again, oh, no consequences. But let the citizen, let the citizen make a mistake, and these folks admitted they made a mistake, they didn't look at the assessment notice. Here in a minute or two, we're gonna, we're gonna go through, and we're gonna abate several individuals, and we've done it in the last six meetings, seven meetings, we've abated individuals because they did not come to, aboard equalization like they should have, but we give them a pass because the government made a mistake. Let me read to you. Today, coming up next, owner-occupied classification was removed by the Director of Equalization Office, relied upon poor information, and should not have made that change. Perfect example, in 2013, 2014 assessment, the Director of Equalization's Office made a mistake, clear and simple, made a mistake in taking the ag, ag classification away. The mistake started with the government. These folks compounded the mistake, no doubt about it. Let's not add to the mistake, let's correct the injustice. And we're talking about laws. SDCL ten dash six dash thirty-one says, "Agricultural property includes all property and land used exclusively," let me repeat, "exclusively for agricultural purposes." Does anyone in this room believe that that land, a hundred and sixty acres, that's isolated, you can't get to it in the wintertime, is not strictly ag? Timber, cattle, hay, and I'll throw in horses. Horses are ag. There's a myth floating around this, at least this county, us, Attorney General opinion. No, it was not an Attorney General opinion twenty years ago. Here's the disclaimer on the back of this opinion. This letter expresses the opinion of the author, and should not be construed as an official opinion of the Attorney General. Horses, when I grew up, we grew up using horses. So what's the problem with horses? But back to the law, anybody have any doubt that this property up there by Green Mountain is not used exclusively for ag, as the state of South Dakota defines it? The government made a mistake, these folks made a mistake, let's correct the mistake and put them back to ag status. We're gonna do that here in a moment for owner-occupied, that the government made a mistake on, and we've done this in the past. Thank you.
So Shannon, tell me what makes the difference on these guys? Because they didn't apply for the abatement? What's the difference between what Georgia's saying on the back of there than what we're doing today with these people, with the Gregsons?
And, uh, the owner-occupied, uh, abatement request?
There was something missed, and, and you had changed it.
The, and, I think, if, if I know what, when he's talking about, uh, we had, uh, a property that was classed as owner-occupied. The assessment notice was mailed, uh, to the property owner, said it was owner-occupied. We received the assessment notice back in the mail, uh, with a, a mark from the post office that said the property was vacant and unable to forward. We, uh, we have two properties like that, vacant and unable to forward. Our office, because we were told the property was vacant and the people no longer live there, removed the owner-occupied classification. Uh, property owner, those two, came in and told us, "I live there, I don't know why the post office did that. I've always lived there." Okay? We don't rely on information from the post office like that any, anymore. But we should not have removed the owner-occupied classification, uh, based on information from the post office. We did, the pro- uh, the property owner never knew, he never got his assessment notice, he didn't know, we, uh, well, he probably knew we had it classed as owner-occupied because he saw last year's, but he didn't know we removed it because he never got it, and we had no contact information for him.
Well, based on the information from the Greg, Gregson, the mistake was made, and we can't do that.
There was no mistake. The assessment notice was mailed with a non-ag classification, fully intending that there be a non-ag classification on that property.
Mr. Chair, let me repeat, the law says if it's ag purposes, and if anybody can, can abut or rebut the notion that that isn't ag land, then come forward. In the meantime, this is the law, our Director of Equalization made a mistake in 2014, when he took the ag status away. As I said a few moments, there was more than one on here. The Director of Equalization relied upon poor information, that's exactly what he did, exactly what he did in 2014. It's back now to twenty, 2015 to ag status. Relied upon poor information, he told you what the poor information was.
So if we decided, Jay, that we wanted to abate them, we would be again, doing something that wasn't legal? Is that what you're saying? I think for the tenth time.
I, I would be saying that that would go against Attorney General opinion and state case law, and, um, but you can, you can certainly throw your motion out there and see if you get three votes. But I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna stand behind suggesting you violate the law.
And if you, you, if I can say something, Mr. Chair-
Jay.
We can do whatever we want. Uh, we can do that, if you wanna make a motion, make you feel good, good. I can tell you what's gonna happen, the auditor and the treasurer are not going to do it. The treasurer's not going to give them back their money. Because they become personally liable for it. And she's not gonna do that, because she's gonna ask Jay, and he's gonna say it's against state law. It's that simple.
If, if these folks were to file or pay under protest, would that create any window of time to perhaps pursue relief?
Pay under protest then brings, uh, you can bring a lawsuit against the treasurer under, uh, chapter ten twenty-seven of our code, and the basis for that lawsuit is that there was an illegal tax. And I would say to you, as I stand here, this has nothing to do with an illegal tax.
Okay, I'll just, Chair, yes, thank you.
Mr. Chair, let me, let me repeat.
We've, um-
George, there's nothing we can do, is what they're saying, as much as we want to help.
But we're going to do that in just a moment on his owner-occupied, just to change it to ag, it doesn't make a difference.
Okay.
The tax hasn't been paid yet, so it's not a refund. This is an abatement.
We're trying, folks, but we can't.
This is an abatement.
Okay, we've kinda run this around the barn enough times, I think. Does anyone have a motion they choose to make?
I move that we grant the abatement, as requested, and the number will have to be refigured to ag status, and it'll have that number available, but that can certainly be figured. The motion is to abate, back to ag status.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Anything further?
Much as we'd like, by law, I'm just gonna set you up for something more, so I apologize.
Next item is, item B.
Item B are abatement requests that my office has brought to you. Uh, I think, uh, they're organized into three pages, that the auditor has grouped them that way. The first page has seven of them on there. I'm gonna introduce all of these, though, with, with a couple of comments. You're gonna see, uh, abatements that have to do with registered mobile homes. Older mobile homes are required, have been required, the law has now changed, and we're done with registered mobile homes after this year, but have been required to register in January, uh, of every year. That registration creates a tax bill. At the end of February, all of those mobile homes that have not registered, our office registers those, uh, and creates then a tax bill for all of those. If something is discovered after that's happened, only an abatement can correct that. Uh, if the property owner brings in an owner-occupied application and has until, I think, March fifteenth, uh, well, that tax bill is already created, he's met all of the statutory deadlines for it, but an abatement is the only way we can correct it. So we've got some, uh, some of those that we're dealing with here. That first page, I'll go down through each one of these, uh, give you an explanation of what, uh, what they are. Kramer was one of those, uh, mobile homes that was registered. Uh, we registered it in February, and when we did that, we found out that the mo-, uh, that the home had burned down, does not exist anymore, we found out from the property owner from that. Uh, so it requires an abatement to take that off. Peggy Coin, maybe? I don't know how to say that. This is where, uh, a property owner filed a termination of joint tenancy upon death of the spouse. Uh, this, uh, termination of joint tenancy comes to our office like any transfer, any warranty deed, quitclaim deed, anything like that. Uh, another one of the problems we've had with the tax software, the owner-occupied classification was removed. Jay has, uh, told us that, uh, an affidavit of terminating joint tenancy is not the same thing as a transfer of ownership. It is, what it sounds like, termination of joint tenancy. Uh, the tax software should not have removed that owner-occupied classification because it wasn't a transfer of ownership. Nottingham is a mobile home that was registered in February, is required by statute. The property owner then brought in an owner-occupied, uh, uh, application, met all of the requirements. The abatement would correct the tax bill to an owner-occupied classification. Burton, uh, the owner applied for an owner-occupied classification, uh, property was not classed as such. We had a problem with our new tax software that dropped some of these. The owner did everything that they should have, and we, uh, we had that information, but in developing the tax software, uh, we had a few of these that dropped it, and we have found, uh, several of them, and the board has acted on them. This is probably the last one we're gonna see of them. Warren and Covey, those are the same situation, and, uh, I addressed these earlier in response to, uh, Commissioner Farabee's comments. The property was classed as owner-occupied, the assessment notice went out, classed as owner-occupied, and we got that vacant and unable to forward thing, uh, that we will now ignore. Uh, the property owner came in and told us, "I live there, I've always lived there." Curran, owner-occupied classification was, uh, removed upon recording an affidavit to terminating spouse's joint tenancy, same thing as the, uh, the second one on the list, exactly the same situation. It's not a transfer of ownership, owner-occupied shouldn't have been removed. That is the first list of those abatement requests.
Any questions or comments?
I have a comment. How can we turn right around and do the exact opposite of what we just did? We're gonna abate these folks because of government error, whether it was software or personal, personnel, it makes no difference, government made a mistake, we're gonna abate them. So how can we abate this and not the previous folks? It makes no sense to me.
Move approval-
Once again, the government makes a mistake, and it's okay.
Move approval of abate applications submitted by the director.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the abatements? Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna abstain until we get, until we get some clear guidance on how we can be, say yes in one instance, and say no in another instance, and still be within the confines of the law, as our Deputy State's Attorney tells us. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Post? Motion carried.
You have two more lists with, uh, two requests on each. Uh, I'll just go down through all, all four of those, and you can act on tho- uh, those at once. I don't know as if there's any reason to separate them. Uh, Dillon is a mobile home that was registered as required by statute in February, and, uh, then the owner brought in an owner-occupied application, timely. Uh, Sweatsig, mobile home that was registered in February, again, then we discovered it was destroyed and hauled to the dump. Uh, the owner did get a moving permit, so everything was done properly. Light is registered mobile home that, uh, was moved and destroyed in December of 2014. At the end of February, we registered it, thinking it was still there, and it was not. Wedge, mobile home, that's an abatement request for 2013. Uh, we no longer have this mobile home on the tax bill, uh, but the mobile home moved to Meade County in August of 2012. The 2013 year should be abated. The treasurer brought that to my attention.
Any questions for Shannon? Any comments?
I'm gonna motion to grant those four abatements.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carried. Okay, items from Weeden Pest.
Um, gonna give you an update on the mountain pine beetle.
This is a, who are you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Scott Guffey, Bankton County Weeden Pest Director. So I can give you an update, uh, where we're at on the mountain pine beetle epidemic in the Black Hills. Um, can't cover three things here. We just recently completed our state grant project, and then I'll give you an update where current status of the pine beetle is, and then future mitigation efforts. So, start off, I just wanna explain, uh, back in 2013, we got a grant from the South Dakota Department of, um, not, South Dakota Department of Agriculture of, that was made through, uh, legislature-approved, two million that would go to the counties. Bankton County got six hundred and seventy million, six hundred and seventy thousand dollars of that portion. And, uh, I just wanna point out here of, uh, the number of cooperators we had, eh, on this project, um, everywhere from private landlords, contractors, to the timber industry, to the co-ops, uh, local counties, um, the auditors, highway department, um, and the, uh, obviously the Department of Ag and the Forest Service. This is, uh, this is, tables show what, uh, the final report was requested or required to submit on completion of that state grant. This kinda shows what we were able to accomplish with that funding. Uh, if you look at the upper left-hand one, uh, that shows what we cut and the, uh, the amount spent on the different areas that we cut in. Uh, supplies, uh, wages, um, Wyoming line survey, what that is, is, uh, there is an area that came up this fall. Uh, we had a short time to get in there, and, uh, the travel was clear out to the Wyoming lines, so we worked with Weston County and their contract surveyors, and we had them come in and survey that area. It was about a thousand acres. So that, that enabled us to, to get in there before the snowfall up there. Um, as you can see, thirty-nine thousand trees cut, we're actually over forty thousand trees now. We still have a contractor out there cutting some dead trees along the rightaways, so we're now up over that forty thousand tree total cumulative since two thou- since 2013. Um, you can see them out there for the grants, paid expenses is more than six hundred and seventy thousand. When I submitted the paperwork, I put more expenses in, in case they threw something out, we'd still have enough to cover our full grant amount. still have enough to cover our full grant amount. On the right there, you can see the county match on the upper right, in the blue. You can see the county highway department, before we started our project, spent a lot of time removing dead trees that were falling across the road. We were able to use that, their time and money there as match for the county. County portion, I should point out that the grant was a two-to-one requirement, so we had to come up with $335,000 as match to get that money. Then you can see the county Weeden Pest time and fuel costs. That came up with that match. Down in the middle part of the table there, this is in the orange, these are the management areas. We basically went into, targeted three areas. The private land buffers were through agreements with the Forest Service. If the private landowner was doing some type of treatment on their private lands, we could go and do a 300-foot buffer on the Forest Service side. Generally, they are enrolled in the state cost share program through the state, and the state would survey it, and they would cut it, and then they'd reimburse the landowner, and then we would come along and do a 300-foot buffer along the Forest Service to try to mitigate that spread onto the private lands. Target areas were areas, future timber sale areas, where we knew that there was going to be some thinning done. It was scheduled for a sale by the Forest Service. Basically, what we did, we'd go in there and kind of hold that spread of the pine beetle, so there's more salvageable trees there when they could actually get in there and do the sale. And then last of our three-prong approach there was road rightaways, public safety. See, 242 miles were surveyed. Basically, we did about 100 feet on each side of the road. Basically, told the surveyors if the tree looked like it was going to impact the road or the rightaway market to have it cut. There you can see the trees marked. Trees treated, that means we cut and chunked them. Trees salvaged, those were salvaged through a sale. We had three different timber sale agreements or salvage sale agreements with the Forest Service. We actually had to pay the stumpage. It was minimal. The dead trees, I think, were 50 cents for stumpage, and the green tree was, or green infested tree was around a dollar. And how we did those sales were, contractor, we would pay him $10 a tree on it. He'd pay for the stumpage. He'd remove it, and then whatever he got at the mill, he got to keep those proceeds. So it was basically kind of subsidized logging. The reason why is a green infested tree, they get paid by weight at the sawmill on total weight. Basically, a green infested tree is about 10% lighter than a regular live green tree. So that provided incentive for them to grab those trees for us. If you look at the lower left here, in the purple, is kind of the funding breakdown. You know, like I said, 670,000 came from the state grant. 100,000 came from Nyman Timber Company through their donation. They gave 50,000 for the last couple of years. And then we had a Title II grant, that's through the Secured Real School Act, through the Resource Advisory Committee set up through the Forest Service. We received close to 5,000 from them, and then the rest were county funds. And then on the right there is the average cost, $15 to cut and chunk, $10 for salvage. Survey cost per acre was $7. Survey cost per tree was $9. So I had to submit all this to the state forestry to finish out our grant and get our remaining money back to us. We just received that check yesterday. I believe the auditor will be in next, at the next meeting to do that supplement back into the budget. This map kind of shows where those treatments were done. If the ones in the red were the private land buffers next to the private landowners. The yellow is the rightaway, where the treatments were done on the rightaways. And then the blue is the targeted areas. The area out to the left there, that's the Bear Springs sale, that's going to be coming up, I believe, this fall to be sold. The upper right there, kind of up there by the Johnson Siding area, that was the Loveland sale, and then also kind of on the perimeter of the Buck Mountain sale. Loveland sale, I think, is going to be sold here in the next couple of months. And then on the lower right down there around Sheridan Lake, that's the Storm Sale, and that'll be sold this fall. Those dots basically indicate either one tree, or it could be a group of trees, up to 50 to 100, depending on that grouping when we went in to mark. So what's the current status of the epidemic? This is two tables that show what the fader analysis indicate. Fader analysis is basically aerial photos are taken in the Black Hills every summer. We go back and look, and we can look at the fading trees. Those indicate trees that were infested the previous fall. So that can give us a number. We're kind of always a day late on this data, but it kind of shows growth trends or a decrease. And if you look at that bottom table, if you look at Pennington County, you know, every year, we've been the leader in number of acres impacted. But if you look at from 13 to 14, we actually dropped 62%, and forest-wide, it dropped 51%. So it's kind of a light at the end of the tunnel. It looks like we're on the downside of this current epidemic. If you look at that five-year total of acres impacted, if you look at Pennington County, 68,000, we're going to be over 70,000. Those are dead tree acres. So even though we're towards the end of this epidemic, we still have a mess out there on our hands, and a huge fire fuel load out there. Not to say that's over with, we're kind of, the epidemics are kind of at different stages, and they're still growing. The epidemiologists are concerned about the area west of Lead, the areas west of Deerfield along the Wyoming line, and then also south of Custer along the Custer State Park line. So those areas are still kind of growing. The rest of the areas kind of stack or decreasing. So they're hoping three to four years, this epidemic will kind of ran its course. So what's in store for future pine beetle mitigation efforts? The legislature approved this year through Senate Bill 152, 750,000 to be administered by the South Dakota Department of Ag, through their forestry division. The original ask was 1.9. They set it at 750. Department of Ag, forestry still had some money carried over from the last couple of years, so probably around a million dollars in there to be administered. We're meeting tomorrow with Forest Service to kind of figure out where we want to go with those dollars. I've told Department of Ag, if they want any help from the county, we're more than willing to help them out, whether it's help on surveying, or if they want us to run some cutting crews, we sure can do that too for them. Again, this year, Nyman Timber donated 50,000 to Pennington County, so we'll have 50,000. We generally coordinate with Nyman on where they kind of want us to go with that funding, kind of in conjunction where they're going with their timber sales, and then we'll also coordinate on where the state's going with their funding. And then kind of the next step, you know, I mentioned there's 70,000 acres of dead trees out there and a huge fuel load. We're gearing up for our shaded fuel break project. I mentioned this to the commissioners last year about this time, that we're in the process of putting together a stewardship agreement with the Mystic Ranger District. And what's unique about that one, it's never been done in the whole Region Two of the Forest Service. They've used it in other parts of the Forest Service and other parts of the country, but never in the Region Two. That takes in Colorado, Kansas, Nebraska, South Dakota, part of Wyoming, and North Dakota. So we're kind of the guinea pigs here, Pennington County and Mystic Ranger District. We're getting close on the five-year master. I think the language has been developed. Just wait and get final approval from Forest Service. The reason it took so long, nobody in the whole region knew how to write one of these agreements, so they've been researching on how to get this agreement in place. And what's unique about this agreement, it'll allow us to, allow the Forest Service to donate either funding or goods back to the project. In this case, what we're going to do on the shaded fuel break, we're basically going to do a 300-foot fuel break along the rightaways and take out all the fuel loads, not just the pine beetle infested trees and the dead trees, but all the fuel loading, and then thin it down to probably a 40 or 50 basal. In doing that, there'll be saw logs there of value. The caveat is, the saw logs, we donate to the project, but any of that donated money, I guess, or funding will have to go back in the project. So they'll have to go back on the ground, which will be good. And we have, I think, about $120,000 in there from the county. We got another 40,000 from the, from a Title II agreement project to go towards this project. So we have some money in there right now. These pictures at the end here, just kind of is up on Roche Road. You can see two, actually three hazard trees there that were taken down. You can see the before and after. So obviously, public safety was the main concern there, because sooner or later, they're going to be coming down, and whether it's public traveling, or else if a fire breaks out, we're trying to evacuate people. We don't want to be dealing with down trees. Any questions on the project?
Any questions or comments?
One question I would have is, are you working with the co-ops, electric co-ops, to clear the, divert as much money as there is you can to clear power lines?
Yes, and actually, these two trees here, there's residents right here, and we actually, the co-op came up, and anytime there's a power line, I always told our contract cutters, let's just call the co-ops, and they'll get the trees down, and then we'll take care of them. They're always right there, prompt and get those trees down for us, so.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mark Schock, Pennington County Highway Department. The highway department is real excited about the stewardship, the shaded fuel break stewardship with the Mystic District. Important for our department and cost savings for the taxpayers. We'll get that buffer zone for a fuel break, a fire break, and then we'll get more sunshine on the road surfaces for winter travelers. It'll make things a lot safer for us. So we're happy to see that coming.
Yeah, it'll increase the field of view, too, for hopefully minimized wildlife and vehicle crashes. As we get this master in place, I'll bring it in front of the commissioners, because the commissioners will have to sign off on it, and we can explain more about what's planned for it, so.
Mr. Chair, may I just say something about the stewardship? We again can thank our lucky stars, we have Scott Guffey doing this, because he is very respected in how he handles our program, and to have the Forest Service be willing to work with us to do something like this is a pretty big deal. And I just want to thank Scott again, because your integrity and your work ethic has made it possible for us to have even a chance at improving the safety of our roads, and I want to thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Scott and Mark.
Yeah, it's a great deal.
Okay. The next item is Item 26, County Library Services Public Meeting Plan. Mr. Troutman.
Okay, we have been talking about moving forward with what we will provide in library services in the future, and one of our decisions was to go out to the public and talk to them about what their desires are. Because I think that since we collect the funding, and I think it seems to be in agreement, we collect the funding from folks, we want to hear what it is they want for their money. So we've been working on some town hall-type meetings, and I want to just mention that there has been a change in one of these. So as I go through it, I'll notice that. The next several Mondays, May 4th, May 11th, May 18th, we will be working in these different areas to meet with people, give them an idea of what our funding issue is, how that's going to change, and then we will also hear what they have to say and see what they are desiring. We're going to start with three. We did talk about several more, but let's start with three and see how that goes. The first one will be May 4th. It'll be out at Western Dakota Tech Library at 6:00. The next one is the one with the change, and that is May 11th at Hill City, and it'll actually be at their city hall. They need a little more room than what the library can provide. So Hill City City Hall at 7:00. Monday, May 18th, we'll be at the Wall Community Library at 7:00, and we're preparing...
Sorry, Community Center. If I typed "library," that's wrong.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Community Center.
Okay. Well, then we have another little change.
Okay, sorry.
That's all right. So we're going to present a PowerPoint and just listen to what people have to say. News release will be going out to all the media outlets. We're going to also, and it's in your information, have a questionnaire on our county website that will allow people who can't come to these meetings to still give their input. And this is, I want to thank Holly. She did a great job. There's more than just a yes or no. There's places for people to just tell us what they really are concerned about, and any suggestions they might have for us moving forward. So we'll be promoting that at all of the meetings. There is going to be some small costs, maybe around $500 total for these three meetings. So just to let you know that. Also in your packet, this is the beginnings of the PowerPoint. Certainly, we are open to suggestions. I'm not sure if you've gotten a chance to look at that, but we would need to know that fairly soon, what you think might be changed on that, because we're not going to have another meeting before we actually go out to our first presentation on May 4th. So is there anyone who has any thoughts of changes on this, or?
I do.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman. And your news release. If I were going to read the first paragraph, "The Pennington County Board of Commissioners will be hosting a series of town hall meetings designed to engage county residents in dialogues about solving..." I'm thinking, I'm a county resident.
Ah.
I think it should be county rural residents. And at the bottom, you do say, "County residents who live outside established municipalities are invited to attend."
That makes sense.
I think you want to make sure that people understand it's rural, so you don't get a whole bunch of Rapid City residents giving you advice, you know?
That's very good.
That's the only change I would have.
It's a great catch. Thanks.
I have a few concerns. I guess if we're doing surveys and we're talking about libraries, did you guys consult any of the librarians in these areas for their concerns or their things that we are putting on these surveys or putting on this PowerPoint that they might be concerned with?
We had them here last meeting.
Did you send them one of these, or tell them that they were going to be on the agenda today, that this was going to be on the agenda by chance? I guess if I'm working with libraries, that would be my bottom line, to see if they had any concerns about what we're putting out, and...
Keep in mind, it's our, it's for our purpose, not for their purpose, because this, what comes back on this will influence how we move forward with funding, and they don't have control over funding.
But they have control over purpose.
Over what? I'm sorry?
Purpose. If I'm negotiating with libraries, or if I'm trying to negotiate where I'm going with libraries, I guess the first consultant I would talk to would be the people that run the libraries.
So I'm fine if you want to send this to the librarians. Keep in mind, though, that it is our, not their, you know, it's not their survey. It's the... it's the county's survey.
Right, which I guess that would be my concern was what they think. And the, the other issue was, um, I, I don't know if we should be asking on the funding and the opt-out and all that stuff until we really feel what their needs are. And, um, I, I truly believe, I don't know, I'll just say this up straight, if a bookmobile is for the future of Pennington County, but when I've been talking to people that are rural and that pay for these services, the biggest issue I'm seeing is they use the library and WDT for, um, the computers. Um, and I, I'm going to have to keep asking myself, and, and people have been telling me, without hopefully offending the libraries, um, you can get online or on a Kindle Fire and check out a book. Is the need for Pennington County Library for the future, if we're thinking of future, in checking out books from the library and, and asking for those services as rural or Pennington County residents, um, to keep paying for services that they can get, um, themselves? Does that make sense?
Totally.
Yes, sir. Um, thank you, and...
I'm Rod Pettigrew, I'm chairman of the board of the Rapid City Public Library Libraries, and to Deb's point first, and if I could make a few additional comments, I'd appreciate that. Um, you are correct, you can get on a Kindle Fire and, um, check out a book. Uh, at, at our, uh, public libraries are, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but I think our purchases of book costs have probably gone down. I'm talking a book that's paper bound. And that's also decreased our, our, uh, our loss rate, because, uh, we, we lose a lot of books, people don't bring them back, we check out videos, people, uh, believe it or not, we have thieves, they steal those or they forget to bring them back. So those costs are being reduced at the library. But when, when we video stream a movie, which you can do, you can live out in the middle of nowhere and be a member of the Rapid City Public Library and video stream a movie right to your living room through our library service, but when we do that, do that, we have to purchase that movie and have it available, just like if we were going to go to Netflix and purchase that movie. And the same, Deb, would be true with books. Uh, when we have digital books, we have to purchase those. And as I understand it...
Jim, are those as expensive as a paper book?
Uh, more. So they're more expensive as a paper book?
But my point is, Rod, without trying to interrupt you.
Yep.
Um, is the future of, of Pennington County maybe going into a technology center since it's more of a need of computers and renting out Kindle Fires, who knows?
Mm-hmm.
For the future, instead of having, uh, a building with costs and, and different things that come with it? I mean, you'll still have those, but, um, making it cheaper, so, um...
Well, I think, Deb, my, my comments to that point would be, libraries today aren't what they were years ago. When I was a little kid, I went to the, the public library on the corner downtown where, um, the, the, uh, architectural firm is, it was loaded with books. Today's libraries, we have books, we have videos, we have computers. Some libraries in parts of the country actually rent out lawnmowers, that's become more of a hub for the community. We offer children's programming, um, throughout the summer, a children's reading program that the, the entire county can take advantage of. Uh, my wife tutors, uh, a woman who's trying to learn English, she's, she's a Mexican. And my, my wife's down there every week at the library using that facility to tutor this person. So, uh, to your point, um, technology has changed the way libraries function, but I believe our, our, um, uh, use by the community is changing as well. We're just not a place to check out books.
So have you seen our, any of our papers, or were you notified so you could maybe make comment of anything that might be more positive or, or, they did a good job on this, but anything that could be added, um, for this? And I don't mean for your conflict interest.
Yep, that's fine.
So that would be pointing towards you, but what, you guys work in this every day, you are library people. So, um, something that would help Pennington County to make sure we're steering the right way, um, with our comments and, and with our options with you guys, so we're not offending you in the future, um, with what we're putting out.
Well, I, I, I was made aware that this item was going to be on today's agenda, um, not through the, uh, through Nancy or anyone, so I'm glad it was, I was made aware, but I feel a disservice was done by not notifying all the libraries that this was going to be on today's agenda. We feel we can offer, uh, some very important, um, knowledge that the customers should see. I, I'm glad to see it's on the agenda. Uh, I wasn't on the library board in the past when this was discussed, and I don't know if Nancy was or not, but at that point in time, it was a very controversial, um, discussion is my understanding, got very adversarial. And everyone, everyone always waits till the last minute for these things to, to get going. I'm glad Nancy put it on the agenda, we still have some time, and it gets the discussion going. I just wish, uh, we would have been made aware of it. I see no one here from Wall, Hill City, or Keystone, they probably don't, uh, don't even know this meeting is, uh, happening today. But I, I, I reviewed this, it's online, and I guess, you know, cutting to the chase, I wish you would pull it off your online service. I think you need our input. When I read this, I, I come away with a very negative, um, mindset of what, uh, the commissioners think the library is. Throughout this document, when it talks about library services, they, they say an increase in tax. And when you talk to Sheriff Toome about his department, when you talk to Buildings and Grounds about their budget, when you talk to Court Services about their budget, I never hear those documents or those words or see that. And on one page here, they show a pot full of money, and it says tax on it. That's implying to the, the users of the library that they're going to have an additional tax. We all know it does take tax dollars to make government run. But I think this entire document was set up in a, um, negative fashion. They had no input from any of the libraries. I, I, I'm speaking for Rapid City, but there's libraries in Wall, Hill City, Keystone, they all have input on this. And I feel, in order to move forward of this in a more positive notion, you should get the library involved, we can work with you and lay this out in such a fashion that we can, uh, help the, um, the residents understand the benefits the library gets, offers, what they can do, and take away all the negativism that's in this current document. So that would be my comments in reference to this. I, uh, time's gone on way too long, I could go through this page by page and tell you what, uh, we feel can be corrected. I would rather offer that we set up a time with Nancy, if she's your spokesperson for the library, and try and modify this, so it has a much more neutral tone than the negative tone that we believe this document has.
Thank you, Rod. Mr. Chairman, may I respond to that? You know, uh, what we are trying to find out, because we have two choices with funding. If we stay where we're at with funding, that means you get less money and every library gets less money. And that was the purpose of last meeting's information. And we felt that it was important for the citizens who pay the tax to understand that if they want to keep library services as they are, it's going to require an increase in taxes. If we don't increase, then there are going to be less services. And that's what we're about. It's not to say that a library is good or bad. This is strictly what we as a county are responsible for. And if you can tell me that you're okay with taking less money, I'm fine with that. But I got a distinct impression from the other libraries last time that they can't take less money. So this is what we are talking about. We're not talking about whether libraries are good or bad or positive or negative. We're saying, this is what we have for money.
I understand that, Nancy, and...
And that's the purpose of our...
To your, your point, to your point, Keystone last time said they could, uh, do without your money.
Yes, they did.
So, so that was one library. And, and the other point is, I understand what you're trying to do, Nats, I really do, and I appreciate you getting this out of the chute early, but we just feel this document sets us up for failure. If, if, if that's what you're, you're trying to do is gather information, it's not in a positive notion.
So, what, failure of what, Rod?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We are here to approve of the plan, and at this point, I see it this way. The plan is for three meetings. What happens at those meetings and how it's delivered can be modified and adjusted. And, but in order to move forward, are the dates and the locations acceptable? And if so, then do we approve the budget for advertising? And that's for a thing. We could go till ten o'clock tonight with the conversation that we're having. And, um, I don't really think that that's embraced in the County Library Services Public Meeting Plan.
Chairman Peterson, I, I appreciate your comments, I really do. I'm not here to argue by, by any means, I just feel we need to work more as, as a team to work through this versus what we've seen published so far.
That, I understand that, and you have delivered that message.
Thank you.
So, um, Chairman, so this has nothing to do with, we won't be putting anything online and we're not putting this online?
Those, those decisions do not have to be made by this commission, totally. If individually you want to share insights and advice, um, so be it.
Well, and...
But in terms of an official decision by this commission, uh, it doesn't say on the agenda, which is notice, that we review the, the program.
I just believe that we are putting this online and that we were putting the, um, review online, and at this point, I'm, I'm not willing to do that at, I'm one of five, until I think there needs to be library, um, people input. I don't think it should be about Pennington County. It's about our citizens that go to their libraries, and I, I think their input is necessary. Anytime I do something, I always include the people I'm going to be affecting, whether that be the citizens or the libraries.
Well...
That's my point, sir.
Anyway.
Okay.
Unless I have misguided you, um, in what I've said, do we or do we not affirm the meeting plan?
What you have in front of you is a complete package, in my viewpoint, of what will occur at those meetings, including the PowerPoint presentation that's in front of you. So Chairman, I'm going to disrespect, I'm going to respectfully disagree with you that that PowerPoint should be a commission decision, and whether it's going to be utilized at those public meetings or not.
Okay.
Um, you know, Nancy and I worked very hard on this PowerPoint presentation. I take offense to Mr. Pettigrew's comments that they were not notified. All the libraries were here at the last meeting. They heard the motion that this plan was going to be brought back at today's meeting. Did I specifically email the PowerPoint presentation to the libraries? No, sir, I did not. And I probably should have, and for that I will apologize. But I'm, I'm of the stance that this is Pennington County's presentation, this is the facts that we saw fit as the options that are out there for people to discuss. And all of those options, in my opinion, should be presented to the public. This board has complete decision and authority to choose whatever options you want, based on the citizen feedback that we're trying to get. But as a taxpayer, if you don't lay out the options for me, I don't know what exists out there. So that's the direction that we were trying to take with those, with the questionnaire and the PowerPoint in front of you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jessica Olson, I'm the vice chair of the library. Am I able to make some comments?
I can hardly hear you.
Okay. I'm Jessica Olson, I'm the vice of the library. Um, I was hoping to make a few comments, if that's acceptable. Um, is it Heidi?
Holly.
Holly, okay. Um, I think we're in complete agreement. We would, um, we, we very much value taxpayer dollars, and that's why we take it upon ourselves to weigh where we spend our money, how many people can benefit from that. And it is a money issue. Um, we appreciate the over four hundred, or the, the fourteen percent that we receive, and we know that we don't want to stretch the county and we want to provide the best services, um, which guided our decision with WDT. Because one of the things that I think it's important to be aware of is children. Um, they're, they need to have their voice represented. They do need access to books. To your point about moving in a technological direction is very important, but it's also important for children to have hands-on reading, which is why a bookmobile is an option. We also really like our General Beatle location and have discussed adding another elementary school, particularly in Rapid Valley, because that was, it was discussed last week, that was where the voter support primarily came from for the county, to support through taxes rather than individual library cards, because we subsidize those children and the people who can't afford an eighty-dollar library card. So for transparency's sake, what I would strongly request is that the PowerPoint is shared with all of us in the county, the county libraries, for feedback, so that we can provide our insights. Because if the county taxpayer isn't allowed to know that if the taxes don't go up or they go away, that they're charged eighty dollars, we will have fewer people have access. And Library Week was last week, I believe, and many, many people received their only internet access through the library. So those are things we're very aware of. So if I could just ask that, um, there's a sense of transparency, I think that would go a long way through to cooperation and finding a solution, because I think there is one. So if, if you make this motion or approve the plan to go forward with the meetings, would you please also include that we're allowed access to the PowerPoint to give feedback, because I think there's time to make changes?
So Chair, if, if we agree with everything except that, um, I, I truly believe that we could do the PowerPoint presentation more positive. I don't think they just think it was negative. I think if I was reading it, even though it tells, tells some really, really good information...
It's very harsh truth.
Okay.
Very harsh.
Then... Okay, can I say something?
Right.
Okay. That, she's saying the bottom line, that it's, it's about, and I'll say this again, it's about service and constituents. And, and we already know, I believe, what I've been talking to a lot of people, they like the Pennington County, or they like the services at the Rapid City Library the most. They don't know about WDT. So that puts me in an area where if I have to work solution with people in the end, then it should, it should work with those people now. Not just them, but I think Hill City and, and Wall. I'll say it again, when I deal with library services or I deal with anything, that's me personally, I take the input of others, I make my PowerPoint presentation, not so it looks, makes them just look good, but it's about libraries and what Pennington County can truly offer you, and if it costs us eighty dollars and what those options are, they can be put in a way that isn't, um, a little rough in, in some of this. And I understand this, but I'm going to tell you, are people going to read all this? Some. But it needs to just get to the bottom line and still be a, a good presentation. So I didn't say that all of this is bad, I said we could, we could do a little better. So I think the whole thing that you did is, is awesome, but I think the PowerPoint, um, I think they're willing to work with you, or Hill City and, and Wall, and just do it a little better.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
I, I'm not trying to be offensive to you, I didn't say this was bad, I said it, it could be better.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead, sir.
Uh, Jim McShane, Director of the Rapid City Public Library, just wanted to, uh, make sure that you knew we were... that you knew we were certainly willing to work with you, and there are harsh truths in here, and we appreciate that, and we appreciate the idea of going to the public and finding out whether they are still in favor of library services and what they are willing to do. I think they have to make that decision. I would appreciate us adding something, a library value calculator? If people are getting the value that they get out of their library, that'll tell them.
I'm trying to see that.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
I mean, I surely hope we concentrate on giving everyone the facts out there, and I surely hope we do not take sides.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, number one, I don't think we can, as I think I complained about somebody else using public money for trying to influence a ballot issue, which I think is exactly the point here. Whether the county can do it or not, I'm not sure, and I think Rapid City Library better check on that legality from their point of view. But I, I mean, it's a fine line to walk, whether you're advocating for it, or advocating against it, or just laying out the facts. So I would have absolutely no problem with the libraries saying, here's what we'd like to have in it, and for us saying, no, we're not gonna put it in there, or yes, we will. It's still our voters and our responsibility to determine how much money they're gonna pay. And if you can come up with a better term than taxes, I would be more than happy to put it in there, but that's what it is.
Okay. Thank you.
So can we come to a solution with working with the library to look at what we're presenting to the public?
So, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Here is my great concern. These are truly facts. It has no this way, that way, it just is what it is. That's what the amounts are that are put in contract, that's what we have for remaining funding, that's what we can do to change one way or the other, whether we offer more services or less. I don't know, it's not the value of the services, it's this is what it is, and do you want to continue with the services? I, I'm really worried, because we really, really stuck to figures and facts because of what Ron said.
I appreciate that, but if you did figures and facts, that's truth, but you did not work with libraries in order to add their figures and facts, so we tell both sides in this story.
So what figures and facts will we add from those libraries?
I think they're trying to help you decide that Deb Hadcock does not know, and we just was told by Mr. Buskrude, we want both sides. So if we're missing something, that's all I'm saying, Nancy, add to it.
Well, the side we're missing is the people who don't use the library but pay the tax.
Yeah.
And we're kinda drilling the hole here, I think, but-
Well, our option-
In my opinion, just for example, you know, you're pointing one way and the other fingers are pointing this way. How many people did you ask when you said you're gonna have a bookmobile?
Were you asking me, sir?
No, I just, I just wanted to throw that out, that there's both sides balanced, and we're kinda nitpicking, I think.
Could I make, could I make one last comment, Chairman? It'll be short.
It is your last one.
Okay, thank you. You know, the best way to see if county residents want library services is put it on the vote. We have a municipal election coming up, I believe it's June 2nd. Let the people decide. If they choose not to support the library, we will still function as a Rapid City Public Library. Our services may be reduced, but let the people decide. They're the ones whose money it is, and 10 years ago, they supported us 85%. That could have changed, and we are willing to take the risk. Put it on the ballot and let the voters decide, would be my suggestion. Thank you.
Are we ready to move forward on this issue?
You know, Mr. Chair, we don't have to make a decision, because the amount of money that we know we will be getting in 2017 is pre-established. We don't, we can just use the money we have. We don't have to go through all of this to see if there is support for doing something different. We can just stay where we're at. So what that means is that the amount of money we have in 2017 will decrease the amount of money that everybody gets. We don't, we don't have to go through this. So it's really, I mean, as a commission, I guess I wanted to know, as a commissioner, I should say, I wanted to know if people in the outlying areas are interested in this. I just think that's the way to go. But I also want them to know, you're talking about transparency? There is nothing more transparent than this is the way it is. And so I, I guess I'm just, I wanna know, would you rather not do this and just keep everything the way they are? We don't, we don't have to do any of this.
Bottom line is, is, okay, so we have concerns, we're nitpickers, that's fine. Do it the way you want, see if you get the results you need, I'm fine. I just think it's not that hard to go to the people that do this. And I don't mean for conflict of interest, I meant for information. Because some of this, if we're trying to move in what direction are we trying to move in? Or just trying to tell them that there's gonna be more taxes, we're gonna, we're telling them the bottom line, we're gonna add more. I have no idea where I'm going, but I can tell you by common sense, I'll keep saying this, common sense, you're gonna use the library services probably here. Because I'm listening, and it's not city people, it's county people, because the city people don't pay the tax. So you ask the county. In fact, a guy came in the other day, I'm going to the library for, use their computer. I've asked George, I've asked others, they use a computer at WDT. It's going to technology, if that's the future. Where's our position going? We're probably gonna be using their services, the people that we're saying that we shouldn't include or have help with maybe with this. Maybe I'm just guessing then. But I'm just trying to find solution here with, okay, we have the facts in here, good job, but we also should find solution with the people we'll be working with for the future. That's just common sense with anything I do in business. So you guys made this up, good job. If we don't decide that we don't want to work with them, or we can't work with them because it's hard to add a couple more things, then let's just leave it like it is and see where you, see where we go. Because in the bottom line, I think you're gonna go be going back to the public library and ask them, how do we find solution with them? Because the future for rural residents, I believe, is still gonna be with them. WDT, I'll keep saying this, I've heard maybe 10 people in there been in there at a time. How many Rapid Valley people use WDT? Because they're the ones closest. I can tell you, I've talked to many Rapid Valley people without nitpicking, and they don't even know WDT's there. We spent a million dollars as Pennington County to build that library, and it's not being utilized, or maybe it's just not being advertised enough and then still paying $360,000 a month. That's crazy. What's the future? If this is gonna bring the future and the, and the things we need, hell, heck, just do it like you're doing it. And that won't matter, any of that in the future, because that has all the facts.
Anything further? Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any further comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, item 27, request for refund of fees.
In 2013, our family received a conditional use permit for a vacation home rental in general ag zoning, which was a permitted, you can have a vacation home rental with a CUP, and we were granted it. In January 2014, we, after being advised to get liability issues, we got an LLC for it. Didn't realize that that was really a transfer, and didn't really understand that until late last fall. It was reviewed and said that that wasn't a, that was a transfer. They revoked our CUP because it was a transfer. We had to reapply for a CUP. We did so, paid the 300 and whatever, and went before the planning board, and they approved the exact same CUP that we had before. And now, all this is today, it was a, is a request from you to reimburse us for the, what we paid for the second CUP, because it was the same CUP. So that's all this is, is a request for reimbursement.
Really wasn't the same CUP, was it?
Yes.
It was for, it was for you and your husband.
Right, and now it's-
Now it's for an LLC.
Right.
So it's not the same CUP.
That's the argument, yes.
Well, that's not, that's an argument, yeah, it's a real good argument.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Yes, I think my neighbor's here, Jeff, do you wanna? Okay.
Other than it is under appeal.
Yeah, it is under appeal, I asked them if I even needed to come here today. I guess this is not under appeal, my reimbursement, so.
What, the granting of the CUP is under appeal? Is that a view?
I think-
Mr. Roller has recently submitted an appeal for the Planning Commission's decision to allow the conditional use permit as a vacation home rental, and that will go, I believe, the next Planning Commission meeting.
What happens if the appeal's granted and the CUP is not granted? Do they get their money back?
I've never experienced this before, I do not know.
Which would make this moot, then.
Possible.
So, does this need to be continued?
If that is your wish.
On this sheet, summary sheet, says a subsequent motion was made by Commissioners Laurie Litsen and Karen Hall to support the applicant's request to waive the application. So all voted aye, five to nothing. I didn't find that in the minutes anywhere.
It's in the Planning Commission minutes.
I didn't find it. I maybe didn't look the right place.
It was just this last Planning Commission meeting.
I can't believe that I voted in favor of it. Then it was five to nothing.
It was there.
Say what the motion is, again.
But it is in there, okay, that's fine, I just-
The motion was to waive it, waive the fee?
No, their motion was to support their request to waive it.
It was a side motion.
So if Corey was to come forward to request the waiver, Planning Commission voted to support her in that. Planning Commission cannot waive fees.
So I'll make a motion to waive the fees this time, same thing, just to transfer. Same people.
You made the motion, is there a second?
I'm gonna second it.
There is a second?
No call, please.
Mr. Chair.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, right in front of you.
Excuse me.
If we could specify the amount, the cost for the conditional use permit is $370. 50 of that 370 would be refunded anyway, once the hearing signed from the property is returned to the office.
So the 320 would be the total.
So the process that you, you and the commission went through was the same as if it were a new application?
Yes, by ordinance, that's correct. The application fee is 300, there's a $20 fee for the staff to produce the letters for the mailings, and then a $50 deposit for a hearing sign, which is posted on the property, which is refunded to the applicant's ones that's returned to the office.
Was the need to process it again as a result of a mistake by planning and zoning?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
No, it's, it was our mistake.
See, okay.
It was our mistake in that we didn't understand that it was a transfer originally, and so that's, that's our mistake.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing done? Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
No call, please.
No call?
Yeah, and what's, what the motion is to grant the-
320. Waive the application cost.
Okay.
320. Buskrude?
No.
Oh, I brought the wrong sheet, I have the wrong commissioners on here. Farabee?
Yes.
Hadcock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
No. Motion carried. Items from planning and zoning, and Board of Adjustments is our first step? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second to convene as a Board of Adjustment. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item A.
PJ Conover, Planning Director. Item A is variance 1509 to reduce the minimum required front yard setback from 25 feet to 10, 10 feet for an existing deck, and to also reduce the minimum required rear yard setback from 25 feet to 24 feet to bring an existing structure into compliance in a general agriculture district. The applicant is Robbie Clausen, who is in the audience today. The current size of the property is .26 acres, and the current land use is residential. As the property exists today, again, it is .26 acres, it has a single-family residence on the property, and onsite wastewater treatment system, and access is off of Carbon Loop from Carbon Lane. The property was planted in 1961, single-family residence was built in 1996 by a, via building permit, and on the building permit, the site plan indicated that the proposed structure would meet 25-foot setbacks. Since that time, the property has changed hands a few times, and in 2007, according to Department of Equalization records, a 704-foot, square foot deck was built on the property without a building permit. Most recently, when the property was up for sale, an MLS number 117888 indicated that the single-family residence had two bedrooms within it. The original building permit for the house was only for one bedroom, and the same for this onsite wastewater treatment system. In early 2015, a complaint was received by the planning department that the deck for the, on the subject property and on the subject house, was built without a building permit and within the right-of-way. The deck is not in the right-of-way, but it was built without a building permit and encroaches within a 25-foot setback of the general ag district. The owner of the property was notified via a letter that was mailed out on February 6, 2015. The applicant, or excuse me, the owner was in communication with the office, and on March 25th, applied for this variance. Now, the request was routed through our department and review, the only item that came back was the concern about the one bedroom that was permitted when the house was originally built, the onsite wastewater treatment system, which was, the size for only one bedroom. However, since that time, the author of the staff report and the applicant, and the owner have talked, and the owner of the property, the applicant, has said that they're only using one of the bedrooms, that the second bedroom is not actually a bedroom and is going to- going to provide information to that effect. Not really part of this, but it is part of the story of, of the property. There are four items that the zoning Board of Adjustment needs to determine when deciding on a variance. The first, that specific circumstances or conditions, such as exceptional narrowness, topography, and sighting exist. No particular physical conditions warrant approval of this variance. However, there is a single-family residence and the deck which already exist on the property, which were built by previous owners. Number two, the variance is not granted use which is otherwise excluded from the particular district. This, if you approve this variance, it would not grant a use which is otherwise excluded. Item three, number three, that due to the specific circumstances or existing conditions, strict application of the zoning ordinance would be an unwarranted hardship. Essentially, to meet the setback, the applicant would either need to remove part of the deck and/or part of the house, or move both. Number four, the granting of a variance is not contrary to the public interest, and is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance. Granting the proposed variance does not appear to be contrary. If variance 1505 is approved, staff, approved by the Board of Adjustment, staff recommends two conditions.
Of granting with two conditions on this one.
I'm sorry?
The motion would be to grant the variance with the two conditions.
If that's what you'd like to do, yes.
That'd be my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion is a second, to grant the variance with two conditions. Any discussion? Hearing done. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Item B.
Get this up for you here, one second, sir. Item B is variance 1510 to reduce the minimum required side yard setback from 25 feet to 15 feet in a low-density residential district. The applicants are Michael and Christie Book, who are in the audience today. The size of the lot is 5.17 acres, and is currently zoned as low-density residential. Low-density residential requires a three-acre minimum, so they do exceed that. Current land use is residential. The applicant, again, is requesting to reduce the side yard setback from 25 feet to 15 feet on the western property line to allow for the addition of a third stall on their, of, on their garage. I'm trying to find an aerial for you here. The house was, the original house was built in, just after 1995, and subsequently has, unfortunately, burned down in 2012. And the applicant was going to construct a new house on the property using the same footprint. However, instead of the garage that was there previously, they are going, they were looking to do a three-car garage. When this was applied for, staff noticed that the three-car garage would encroach, and I guess the site plan's in your packets, not on the, not on the PowerPoint. The three-car garage was going to encroach into the setback on the property. The building permit was revised to allow for the two-car garage, which would meet the setback, and that was approved and submitted and delivered to the applicants. However, since that time, the applicants have decided that a three-car garage would better suit the needs of their family. Hence this variance request in front of you today. The terrain to the north and the east of the single-family residence is steep and rocky, and there's also, as you can see from the aerial that's listed, the southern side of the property gets very narrow. Also, from records that we have about the onsite wastewater treatment system, it does exist in the southern port of the, southern portion of the property, south of the house, which limits the buildable area immediately around the prop, around this house and to the south. This request was routed through the Interdepartmental Review, and no significant issues were received by our office during that time. The zoning ordinance requires the Board of Adjustment to determine four specific criteria are met. First, that specific circumstances or conditions, such as exceptional narrowness, topography, and sighting exist. Staff believes and has verified that exceptional narrowness, topography, and exist on the subject property. Number two, that the variance is not granted use which is otherwise excluded from this particular use. This setback variance would not grant a use which is otherwise excluded from the property, other property's zone, low-density residential. Number three, that due to the specific circumstances or existing conditions, strict application of zoning ordinances would be an unwarranted hardship. Strict application of the zoning ordinance would prevent the addition of a third stall on the property, would require the applicant to either build it somewhere else on the property, or to settle for a two-car garage. Number four, that the granting of a variance is not contrary to the public interest, and is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance. Granting the proposed setback would allow for a 15-foot side yard setback for the desired third-star garage, and essentially would allow for the reduced setback distance in a low-density residential district. If variance 1510 is approved by the Board of Adjustment, staff recommends two conditions be included.
Just, Chair, just one question. What's on the west side of that property where they're building that garage?
Here?
Yes. Is there, is there going to be a road or anything else there?
Nothing, just forest.
Deep? Okay. I'll move approval with the two conditions, please.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second. Discussion. Hearing done. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, do we have another motion?
Move to come out of Board of Adjustment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, to adjourn as a Board of Adjustment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda.
The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for the planning and zoning contains the following items. Item C, road name Osprey Trail, Jim Skoll, approval is recommended. Item D, major plan unit development 15, sorry, major plan unit development amendment 1501 for High Country Guest Ranch. John Marzak is the agent, recommended to be continued to the May 5, 2015 Board of Commission meeting. Item E, first reading and public hearing of rezone 1412 and comprehensive plan amendment 1409 for Gordon and Carmen Abernathy, and recommend approval of the recommendation to withdraw. That was per the applicant's request. Item F, first reading and public hearing of rezone 1504 and comprehensive plan amendment 1504 for Victor Furman, and approval is recommended. Item G, first reading and public hearing of rezone 1502 and comprehensive plan amendment 1502 for Mitch Morris, recommended to be continued to the May 5, 2015 Board of Commissioners meeting. Item H, first reading and public hearing of rezone 1503 and comprehensive plan amendment 1503 for Mitch Morris, and approval is recommended to be continued to the May 5, 2015 Board of Commissioner meeting.
Does anyone wish any of the items on the consent agenda removed? If not, do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as given to us by the Director of Planning and Zoning, with his approval in concurrence.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, PJ, for all your hard work.
Items from the Chair, I don't think at this point I have any, but if someone has a question, I might be able to answer it. If not, we'll move on to committee reports. Any committee?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, I would just like to kind of mention something. On last Wednesday, I went to the National Forest Advisory Board meeting, and a large part of the meeting was focused on the fire season and what they anticipate it's going to be like. Of course, it's already started, but one of the things they mentioned is that the weather is just so against us this year. We, unless we get above-average rain, not average, above-average rainfall, in May and June, it's going to continue to get just worse and worse and worse. And the state was there, the federal firefighting, all of those firefighting organizations were there. And one of the things that was brought forward is that there are other parts of the country that will require resources to put out fires, and California is extremely bad, the whole state. And they're saying that because there are so many areas that have drought problems, that we may have a lot of trouble if we have a fire in getting resources to help fight that fire from other parts of the country. And I thought it was a bit ironic that that was Wednesday, and Thursday, we had the fire out by Creighton, and we already had that issue, just as they talked about it the day before. Because we were caught in a situation where the federal firefighting units were, had just left the area, and the state was committed to win cave fire. So then that left no resources from federal and state to help us fight the fire out at Creighton. And so that's, all those volunteer fire departments were called in. And I, I just think we need to be aware as a county, I know that the fire, the volunteer fire departments are aware of it, everybody's very concerned. The other thing that the state and feds said is that they are not going to send in firefighters if they deem it to be too dangerous. And in the past, a lot of times, they've protected homes by stationing fire engines there and firefighters. They're not going to do that this year. They don't have the resources, and they say they don't want to put what they do have into jeopardy. So we're, I, I'm real concerned about where we're going with this, and I think as Commissioners, we need to be aware that it could be a really rough year. Everybody says that the minute they hear of a fire, they're going to put it out. And that's the good news, but it's going to be rough. So, I just want everybody aware of that.
Did you say anything about, are we going to commit any of our equipment to California? Since it's dry here, and we won't get it back?
No, we will. But what happens is, the federal firefighters, you know, the, I wanted, I just lost the term, black hats? No, is that the right one?
Smoke jumpers.
Smoke jumpers, all of them. They'll pull them out there if the fire's there first.
Sure. But, but we're not going, I mean, we, we sometimes, which is only right, move a lot of equipment to Texas, I know, when they had the big fire down there.
Arizona.
But we're probably not going to do much of that this year.
No, because we, I, now, I can't speak for the state, but I don't think locally, those, the volunteer fire departments are wanting to do any of that. It, and it's gone across the state. I mean, they're, the volunteer fire departments are talking, you know, they know they're going to have a big responsibility, given the way things are coming out. So it's going to be dangerous.
It is.
You're, boy, we better hope for rain.
Okay, any other committee reports?
Well, I have, Mr. Chair, as the Emergencies Services Board met last week, and they're getting really close to having neighbors over here dispatches.
Mm-hmm.
Next, early next month, move over here, and they're all set up, ready to go.
Anything further? If not, items from the public.
You had to wait a long time.
Early today. Dan Richer? Just a couple, a couple quick things. First, I'd like to commend these volunteer firefighters for stepping up and stepping in, because if it wasn't for those guys, we'd be in trouble. Since my, I'm just going to put 10 gallons of gas around my house, I'll leave, I guess. The other thing is, I was asked, or I asked a question here a couple months ago, but your meetings have been going on forever, so, about Elsora Task Force, and was directed to go to the auditor, which I did. And the auditor said they just cut the check. Whatever you guys tell them to do, they just cut the check. So I did some checking around on my own, and near as I can tell, the Elsora Task Force has really done nothing significant. So, I think maybe you, you need to start asking, where is the money going? What are they spending this money on in the task force? And I, and I know ours is a small contribution, but it's still, it appears nobody's doing any follow-up on it, so. That's the end of my speech.
Thank you, I think that's a good thing.
Thank you.
With budgets coming up, we will probably have to take, start taking a closer look at that stuff.
Thank you.
And probably in that, in the next request will probably be about, about budget time, about July, and we want to probably keep in mind that we may not want to make that payment, or I shouldn't say, honor that request, unless there is something forthcoming in the way of requirements.
Mr. Chair, well, I, I'm not disagreeing, I think we need to make sure we remember that we don't respond to the public's comments.
Okay, do we need an executive session? Then we won't ask for a motion.
Do adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second.
We can change that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we should, we should, we should change that.
Motion carried.